Good to go? All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll be calling the meeting to order of April 28, 2020. As a reminder, remember, due to the emergency orders, we'll be doing a virtual city council meeting tonight. Also, our meeting will be a little bit longer than usual since we have several public hearings on the business items on the agenda. So let's get started. Our invocation will be done by our city manager, Erin Adams, and I will do the flag salute. So please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you please bow your heads? Dear heavenly Father Lord, we come to you tonight with an extremely heavy heart on this global pandemic that has ravaged our world, our state, our county, our city. And, Lord, we're here tonight to do the business of Temecula. And we pray for wisdom and discernment in making good decisions for the city of Temecula. I also want to take this time, Lord, just to lift up and prop up all of the frontline medical professionals, the doctors, the nurses, the first responders that have put their life on the line nationally and globally. We celebrate them. And, Lord, just continue to have your hand over the city of Temecula. We know you've never left us and you've guarded this city. And there's goodness and there's light ahead as we come out the other side of this global pandemic. We pray for the businesses that are hurting. We pray for the citizens and the residents that are hurting, Lord, that they can hang on, that we will get through this together. And I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Please join me in the salute to our flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards? Councilmember Nigar?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
I'm here.
Mayor Stewart?
I am here. All right. So tonight, we have two very important proclamations to present and a very special guest joining us to accept the proclamation. The proclamations are for the National Hospital Week and the National Nurses Week. I will now ask our city clerk to read the proclamation, and then I and my colleagues will share a few comments. After that, we will ask Janet Ruffin, Chief Nursing Officer for Temecula Valley Hospital, to share her thoughts. Madam City Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Happy to do so, Mr. Mayor. First, we will go ahead and present the National Hospital Week, whereas the mission of hospitals is to develop the well-being of those it serves with a commitment of excellence to every patient. And whereas hospitals, big and small, provide everything from emergency care, labor and delivery, surgeries, and specialized care to fill a vital need in communities. And whereas every nurse, doctor, practitioner, and staff member are necessary to deliver the compassion and quality services needed. And whereas the hardworking people that compose our hospitals deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy. And whereas National Hospital Week celebrates all hospitals and people who support the health of their communities to form partnerships for a healthy region. And whereas this celebration serves as a reminder that hospitals are the foundation of our community and that they serve the people in every community from all walks of life. And you, Mr. Mayor, have declared, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Temecula, that May 10 through the 16th to be National Hospital Week. The second proclamation is for National Nurses Week. Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession. And whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings. And whereas the American Nurses Association, as the voice for registered nurses in this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing delivery of primary and preventative healthcare. And whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients. And whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. And whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses is an increasingly important component of the United States healthcare delivery system in the future. Mr. Mayor, you have, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula and the citizens, proclaimed the week of May 6th to the 12th to be National Nurses Week.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, I guess I'll start with my comments. I'm very proud that we actually have a hospital here in Temecula. And it is a very nice hospital here in Temecula. And they're doing an amazing job, especially during this pandemic. So, and I was able to actually take part in a thank you parade, which was really fun. And it seemed like the nurses and the doctors who were out there appreciated it. So we do thank you for all that you're doing. And I'll move on to Councilmember Nigar.
No, I'm good. I don't have much to say, other than we couldn't do it without you. Just thank God for you guys and Temecula surviving this because of your efforts. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Ron?
Just a quick thank you to the nurses especially. You know, it's an interesting time for all of us. I mentioned before, my mom was a nurse and very proud of her, you know, her career. I know how difficult it is. I know the risks that nurses face. And I know the difficulty that families must be feeling right now with the amount of time away and isolation that occurs right now. So our hearts go out to all of those nurses and pray for a swift recovery for everyone and return to normal soon.
Councilmember Schwank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Janet, thank you for being here tonight. I just really quickly say, just thank you for being a part of our community. Thank you for taking care of our community. We clearly are in a better position because you're here and you're taking care of everyone in our community. So just a hearty thank you from myself and my family.
So now I'll go to Janet Ruffin. So could we hear a few comments from you?
Sure. Thank you. It is an honor and privilege to be here this evening on behalf of Darlene Wetton, who is our CEO, who could not be here this evening. I am honored to accept these proclamations for Hospital Week and Nurses Week. We are a thousand employees strong and we support the community like no other hospital that I have ever worked in my life. And so we are privileged to be able to take care of you through this pandemic. We want to let the city know that it is safe to come to our hospital. We have our doors open. Please, please, if you are sick, to come and that we want to take care of you and it is safe to come to our hospital. So we will celebrate these hospital weeks. It's been a very tough time for the last several months. I arrived here in February as the new CNO and got my shoes, running shoes, on. And we've been busy ever since. But it's been, it is an honor and I'm so pleased to be part of this community. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being a part of our community and let all the nurses and the doctors know that we truly do appreciate them and we do honor them, especially with this proclamation.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. So now we're off to public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have several public comments. On non-agendized items, a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing and business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments were submitted and will be read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda and in concurrence with the state's executive orders governing the conduct of public meetings under the declared emergency. Mr. Mayor, we have 18 comments on non-agendized items. It is on the same topic. So I will go ahead and the speakers are queued up and go ahead and start the speakers, announce the speakers, and then read their public comment up to the time allotted. The first speaker is Amy Natus. And Amy writes, "I think it is relevant in that it shows we have a serious safety issues referring to a petition that she submitted and a video link with this designated horse crossing as it currently exists. There are three of these crossings on Inez Road that link our trail system, and all three are extremely dangerous. There is also another very scary blind corner horse crossing on the Paz Road before the roundabout that needs attention. We need to follow suit with wine country solar-lit push button horse crosswalks before somebody is seriously injured or worse. I feel this should be addressed ASAP as I have seen more equestrians, hikers, and dog walkers utilizing our trails right now than in my last five years here as a resident." Thank you. The next speaker, it's actually speakers, are Luis and Denise Todd. And they write, "My wife and I moved to Rancho, California, Temecula in 1986 or 34 years ago and raised our two boys. We own a small manufacturing company in town that produces quality control equipment to the medical and many other industries. I am a board and trails committee member of Los Ranchitos. Los Ranchitos is one of the oldest neighborhoods going back to 1966 in Temecula and shouldn't be ignored. We are actually one of the old traditions part of the city of Temecula motto. Why we object on the proposed widening of Inez Road in our neighborhood, the Los Ranchitos Homeowners Association. We shouldn't be treated as a simple roadway corridor to get somewhere else. We choose to live in Temecula and Los Ranchitos area because of the great quality of life. We are not opposed to changes in our community provided the impacts to our quality of life are serviceable and balanced. We believe that widening of Inez or Dipertola roads meets neither of these criteria. We are concerned with the increased number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. This is the direct result of the additional stoplights installed on Temecula Parkway slowing commuters. So they simply cut through our neighborhood that has a speed designed for a four-lane road with no residential access. We are not able to enter or exit our driveway safely. We have no safety buffer entering or exiting our driveways on Inez-Dipertola roads from the speed limit of 45 miles per hour moving traffic, and we all know this really means 50 miles per hour. Simply put, we are a residential neighborhood with driveway access and the speed limit should be adjusted to reflect the residential definition and reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. I know we are considered a rural area, but with the volume of cut-through traffic, safety should be taken into account and support the recommendation of the slower speed limits. People that do not live in our neighborhood drive through our neighborhood not obeying the speed limits to get to their quiet neighborhoods. We need more and consistent law enforcement presence. It is no longer safe to ride a horse or walk the Los Ranchitos Trail System because traffic control measures are not in place to allow safe crossings. Please install signalized horse crossing at designated areas to allow for safe crossing. We oppose the widening of Inez-Lapaz and Dipertola roads through our neighborhood. It will just make the current situation worse. This is not based on our opinion but on the city of Temecula's general plan circulation element. When Temecula Incorporated in 1989, the citywide road network was complete. The gaps in the road network forced through traffic onto local streets. Higher traffic volumes and excessive speeds generated numerous complaints and requests for city action. Since that time, the city's road network has undergone significant improvement. However, to continue to improve local circulation, new internal connecting routes are required in some areas to maximize the capacity of the overall road network. Mr. Mayor, that is up the three-minute limitation. So we will go ahead and keep the whole email for a part of the record, and I will move on to the next comment. The next comment is by Jim Salsepor. And he writes, "I am a homeowner on Inez Road and as such, am strongly opposed to the widening of that road. The increased traffic will make an already bad traffic situation worse. It is difficult for me to get to my horse trailer on Inez sometimes during the day, and it is very dangerous for me to ride the horses on the trail. Inez Road has become a shortcut for non-residents to bypass Highway 79 and thereby making life difficult and dangerous for the neighborhood residents. Thank you for your understanding and consideration in this matter." The next comment is by Tiana Bushman. "I am again writing in opposition of the widening of Inez between Santiago and Margarita. This will negatively impact my neighborhood by increasing traffic and making it more challenging to cross Inez by foot, horseback, or even by car." Thank you. The next comment is by Shannon Flynn. "Hello, city council. Thank you for adding my comments to the record. My boyfriend and I moved to Temecula in 2011. We choose to live in Los Ranchitos because it was conveniently located to the highway for his business and had land on which I could indulge my horsekeeping. I am against the widening of Inez and Dipertola for many reasons. I am concerned with the increased number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. People use social media apps to ease their commute home because traffic improvements like the Western Bypass and 15215 project have not proceeded in a timely basis. So many people traveling through here during heavy traffic have nothing to do with our town or community. They do not follow the speed limits or have the courtesy or good sense to slow and carefully pass bikers, horses, and children walking their dogs. I am not able to enter or exit from Inez to Yorba safely. It is no longer safe to ride a horse or walk the trail system because the traffic control measures are not in place to allow safe crossings. Imagine having four lanes to traverse. The current speed limit is way too fast. When I am traveling just under the speed limit, people zoom past me when they hit the lane. Put in to allow safety for people who are turning. Please reduce the speed limit so we don't get in an accident at our own homes and we can safely make sure of our own neighborhood streets. It feels like you are a hostage when you must wait for five to 10 minutes for a break in traffic or for a friendly driver to stop and give you egress. This plan does nothing to ease the current bottleneck on the Inez corridor, which is not being improved. The area from Santiago to Rancho Cal-duck Pond, this is the actual area causing backups. Four lanes will only allow for more volume of cars using the corridor. It will not increase safety or decrease time to traverse the corridor. It will only result in more cars using local streets instead of the 79s. To conclude, I oppose the widening of Inez-Lapaz and Dipertola roads through our neighborhood. It will just make the current situation work. Please help councilmembers who are our only hope in protecting our quality of life in Temecula." Thank you. The next speaker is Clayton List. "I am writing to let you know I am opposed to the Inez expansion. We, my family and I, live at 29835 Vallejo Avenue. We moved here specifically due to the riding trails. Our daughter loves riding as it is now crossing Inez is difficult and dangerous. If you widen the road, it will only increase the danger. The city council is supposed to support the residents. By moving forward with this project, you are letting a lot of us down. We will show our disclosure at the voting booth." The next speaker is John James. "I oppose the project between Lapaz and Santiago as the project will continue the four lanes all the way to Margarita and to continue from Santiago to Duck Pond. I would like you to know that many nearby neighbors are against this road widening project because it significantly impacts the values of our homes, which are nestled in a private, unique area, which is highly desirable neighborhood, appealing to neighbors who enjoy our peace, privacy, and tranquility of its surroundings. The impact of this project will definitely produce more traffic, pollution, hazard, and waste debris material, as well as congestion causing noise disturbing our peace. There is already a safety issue created by those traveling on Santiago Road in excess of 50 miles per hour and sometimes over 60 miles per hour in a residential road. Ingress and egress will be impacted for those with driveways often Inez and Dipertola. The impacts to traffic with people already cutting through our neighborhoods and cul-de-sacs is significant compared to historical traffic counts. It also creates further safety issues for joggers, walkers, and especially children being dropped off by the public and private school buses by reckless drivers who believe it is a motor speedway. I believe that the environmental impact assessment and study should be thoroughly vetted out for completeness, accuracy, accidents, reported deaths, chemical spills, dangerous debris, impacts to the environment, fire and safety, etc. Again, this is a bad decision for our community, and I am opposed to this project in whole." Thank you. The next speaker is Suzanne Williams. "As a new resident of Los Ranchitos, we absolutely oppose this proposed expansion of Inez into, I think she meant to say, four lanes. We chose Los Ranchitos because of the ranch community and have seen firsthand the struggle that horses go through to cross Inez. Widening the street would make it that much harder to cross. This is in a crested community, not a thoroughfare through our ranch neighborhood to offset highway traffic. Further, the real issue seems to be traffic bottleneck north of Santiago and not between Santiago and Lapaz. We hope you value our equestrian community enough to put a no vote to this proposal." The next speaker is Brad Williams. "We moved to Flores Drive in the Los Ranchitos community in September of last year. The charming appeal of this particular area of Temecula was the deciding factor for this relocation. It is, by all accounts, a residential equestrian neighborhood of Temecula, now being threatened as a mere thoroughfare for commuters from the overcrowded Interstate 15. This is where we reside and where we ride horses on our streets and trails, trails that run throughout. As it stands currently, it is oftentimes very difficult to cross Inez by horse, and widening the street would only make this worse. If you feel the need to spend city dollars on street improvements, do this north of Santiago on Inez as that is where the congestion is felt the most. Please do not widen the street and invite even more non-residents through our neighborhood." The next speaker is Candy Zimmer. "We moved to Temecula from Yorba Linda in 2002. We moved here because of the beautiful rural country atmosphere. Highway 79 was a two-lane road. There was minimal traffic. People were riding horses on 79 South, Temecula Parkway, and in downtown Temecula. I understand that with the growth of the city, this is no longer possible, but we still should be able to ride in our own rural neighborhoods. I am concerned with the increased number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. People use social media apps to ease their commute home because traffic improvements like the Western Bypass of 15215 project have not proceeded on a timely basis. So many people traveling through here during heavy traffic have nothing to do with our town or our community. They do not obey the speed limits with this, and it is no longer safe to ride a horse or walk the trail system because traffic control measures are not in place to allow safe crossings. Imagine having four lanes to traverse. I must get off my horse to stop traffic to cross at the designated horse crossings. This plan does nothing to ease the current bottleneck on the Inez corridor, which is not being improved. The area from Santiago to the Rancho Cal-duck Pond, this is the actual area causing backups. Four lanes will only allow for more volumes of car using the corridor. It will not increase safety or decrease time to traverse the corridor. It will only result in more cars using local streets instead of the 79 South, Temecula Parkway. To conclude, I oppose the widening of Inez-Lapaz and Dipertola roads through our neighborhood. It will just make the current situation worse. Please help councilmembers. You are our only hope in protecting our quality of life in Temecula." Thank you. The next speaker is Ashley Zimmer. "I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to add my comments into the record. My name is Ashley Zimmer. I have lived at 31010 Pescado Drive, Temecula, in the Santiago Estates for almost two years. My in-laws have lived in this community for about 18 years. I moved here to this community because it's a more rural, it's a beautiful horse community, easy for walking our dogs with our children, tranquil. I am against the widening of Inez and Dipertola corridor. I am concerned with the increase of number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. Please use social media. People use social media apps to ease their commute home because traffic improvements like the Western Bypass and 15215 project have not proceeded in a timely basis. So many people traveling here during heavy traffic have nothing to do with our town or community. People that do not live in our neighborhood drive through our neighborhood and do not obey the speed limits to get to their own neighborhood. This plan does nothing to ease the current bottleneck on the Inez corridor, which is not being improved. The area from Santiago to Rancho Cal-duck Pond, this is the actual area causing backups. Four lanes will only allow for more volumes of cars using the corridor. It will not increase safety or decrease time to traverse the corridor. It will only result in more cars using local streets instead of 79s. To conclude, I oppose the widening of Inez-Lapaz and Dipertola roads through our neighborhood. It will just make the current situation worse. Please help councilmembers. You are our only hope in protecting our quality of life in Temecula." Thank you. The next speaker is Sherry LaFour. "My parents live on Inez Road, and I am against the proposed widening of Inez Road through rural residential equestrian Los Ranchitos. The 45 mile-per-hour speed limit is already dangerous for us to enter or exit the driveway, and I often feel like my life is in danger trying to pull into the driveway to visit my parents' house. With the 45 mile-per-hour speed limit, people driving are frequently going over the speed limit, and we slow to enter the driveway. We get honked at and crazy zooming around us. When we come to visit in our camping trailer, it is nearly impossible to get traffic to stop long enough for us to pull in. There have been a few accidents this last year with one resulting in a motorcycle officer's death and a resident hit from behind by a car going 65 miles per hour as she was turning into her driveway. Los Ranchitos is and has been an equestrian residential neighborhood as it began in the 1960s. Widening Inez Road will only bring more dangerous traffic detrimental to our long-established neighborhood and lifestyle. The city council agreed in January about STRs. We choose this neighborhood for its rural lifestyle, serene beauty, and once-quiet roads. We need more stop signs and lower speed limit for the community's safety. Crossing Inez on horseback or as a pedestrian is very dangerous. If you build more lanes, it will only result in more vehicles cutting through this residential neighborhood. Please conserve this historical neighborhood since the 1960s and our safety. Not to mention widening will also lower property values." Thank you. The next speakers are Jerry and Donna Levitt. "We are Jerry and Donna Levitt and live at 29999 Inez Road. We are against widening Inez Road through rural and historical. It has been historical since 1960s residential equestrian Los Ranchitos. The posted 45 mile-per-hour speed limit is already dangerous for us to enter or exit our own driveways with our vehicles, resulting often in traffic honking at us or speeding around us. When we have a trailer, it is nearly impossible to safely enter or exit either direction safely. There have been times we have had to exit our truck to stand near the roadway and slow other vehicles so we can enter or exit our property. I am literally in fear while mowing, weeding, and maintaining the side of the street of our property from all the speeding traffic. There have been a few accidents this last year with one resulting in a motorcycle officer's death and a resident hit from behind by a car going 65 miles per hour as she was turning into her driveway. We moved here 20 years ago."
Right there. See it? See it leaving right there?
I'm sorry. Can everyone please mute while we conclude the public comments? "We moved here 20 years ago because Los Ranchitos is and has been equestrian residential detrimental to our long-established neighborhood and lifestyle. As when the city council agreed in January about STRs, we chose this neighborhood for its rural lifestyle, serene beauty, and once-quiet roads. We need more stop signs and lower speed limit for our safety. Crossing Inez on horseback is very dangerous as well for pedestrians. If you could build more lanes, it will only result in more vehicles cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. Please conserve our historical neighborhood since the 1960s and our safety. Widening will also lower our property values." Thank you. The next comment is from Thomas LaFur. "I am against the proposed widening of Inez Road through rural residential and equestrian Los Ranchitos. The 45 mile per hour speed limit is already dangerous for a residential neighborhood and people often speed way beyond 45 miles, resulting in several accidents this past year, including a motorcycle officer's death and a resident hit from behind by a car going 65 miles per hour as she was turning into her driveway. Los Ranchitos is an equestrian residential neighborhood as it began in the 1960s. Widening Inez Road will only bring more dangerous traffic detrimental to our long-established neighborhood and lifestyle. The city council agreed in January about STRs. We chose this neighborhood for its rural lifestyle, serene beauty and once quiet roads. We need more stop signs and lower speed limits for the community's safety. Crossing Inez is already very dangerous, and if you try to walk, bike or horse ride around the neighborhood, there is no way to cross the street and the cars are going way too fast to be safe. If you build more lanes, it will only result in more vehicles cutting through this residential neighborhood. Please conserve this historical neighborhood since the 1960s and our safety. Widening will also lower our property values. The next speaker is Christina Levitt. I am against the widening of Inez Avenue in Temecula. My parents live on the street and the speed limit now is too high, and I have been nearly rear-ended trying to enter their property. With the current traffic circle that was installed, traffic has only increased their speed to dangerous rates. Walking the paths in the neighborhood is unsafe with the high speed. There is no way I would want my family to be riding their bikes from their own home with the speed limit that people drive on Inez. Ination not be widened. It will take out numerous trees that line people's property to shield them from the traffic and noise that is currently on Inez. The, the widening and speed limit will make it more dangerous to enter and leave properties. These properties are homes with families and kids. People should not be fear, should not be fearful to play in their own front yard because of traffic. I hope the city realizes the mistake of widening Inez. Please hear the people in the community and stop this project before it begins for the safety of those living and visiting the area. Next speaker is Lee Rosso. My name is Lee Rosso. I have lived in the Los Ranchitos community for 10 years. I moved here to Temecula because I believed in its values, old traditions, new opportunities. These values seem to guide the city on the right path. I used to commute to Temecula, but after a couple of years, we decided to actually move to Temecula. We love the city and fell in love with Los Ranchitos. I would like to state that I am against the widening of Inez and Deportola for the following reasons. Number one, I am concerned with the increased number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. Number two, I am not able to enter or exit my driveway safely even under current conditions before a widening. Number three, people that do not live in our neighborhood drive through our neighborhood, not obeying the speed limits to get to their own quiet neighborhoods. Number four, it is no longer safe to ride a horse or walk the Los Ranchitos trail system because traffic control measures are not in place to allow safe crossings. Number five, widening of Inez, La Paz and Deportola roads through our neighborhood. It will just make the current situation worse. In fact, there are studies showing that widening of a road to reduce traffic does not work. It only gets worse. Please see articles on the web about induced demand. The money budgeted for this project could be used to improve the I-1579 North interchange. Number six, please reduce the speed limit as we are a neighborhood with our driveways on these roads and have no safety buffer. As a matter of fact, when we purchased the house, the front fence was damaged by a car that could not manage the small turn in the road due to its high speed. Thank you. The next comment is from Laura Bustos. I disagree in the widening of Inez Road. I live right in front of this road. My driveway leads out to the road. Widening this road would be a lot more hazardous for my family. Ever since the construction on the roundabout the city has put on Inez, there has been more accidents. I count about six and witness two high traffic and speeding. Also, I have had issues with trash pickup because the trucks do not want to stop with people driving so fast and not letting them back up to do their job. Another issue is I will not be able to pull out my horse trailer with having a four-lane road and drivers are crazy and have no respect. As it is now, the city should have consulted with us when doing the roundabout because right now it's difficult to get my trailer out due to the cement paper they placed right in front of the entry to my driveway. Temecula is known for its history of the Old West horses, ranch homes and for its wine country. So why would the city want to change the charm of Temecula with its ranch estates and one of its oldest horse communities? They should help our community in making it suitable to its residents who pay property taxes. So we should have a say on what gets done on this road to keep Temecula's history. We could have lived in any part of the world and we chose the city of Temecula for its Old Town Horse Community and Wine Country. If any member in the city council has a love for horses, they would understand. If there is not one, then they should take the time and sit with the community to get a feel of what we are talking about. Traffic will never be solved. You can't control population growth. It will never be enough space. I have lived in Rancho Cucamonga and have been in Norco, and they managed to include in their plans horse trails, walkways and bicycle lanes for residents without sacrificing the culture of residents and the progress of the city. And our last comment actually didn't have a name associated with it, and the email address did not identify a name. So this comment reads, dear city council members, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to add my comments into the record. I am concerned with the increased number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. People use social media apps to ease their commute home because traffic improvements like the Western Bypass and 15215 Project have not proceeded in a timely basis. So many people traveling through here during heavy traffic have nothing to do with our town or community. People that do not live in our neighborhood drive through our neighborhood and do not obey the speed limits to get into their own neighborhood. It is no longer safe to ride a horse or walk the trail system because traffic control measures are not in place to allow safe crossings. Imagine having four lanes to traverse. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-agendized items. And I do believe that Councilmember Nigar has some comments in regards to the subject matter of these particular public comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Madam City Clerk. I just want to say, first of all, I appreciate all the Los Ranchitos residents who have taken the time to write in, also all of you that came to our meeting, I believe it was back in January and spoke before of all this COVID-19 broke out. And every single one of your concerns, we have logged and taken a note of, especially tonight. A couple of things that I want to communicate out to the community. Currently, this project is not funded. Especially now with COVID-19, it is unlikely that it will be funded for at least another year and probably more like two. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but with our city shut down for pretty much the first quarter of this year and now getting into the second quarter, city revenues are going to be very dismal. The good news about that is we've always planned for this type of contingency. So you shouldn't see any services or any slack in services. The reason why I bring it up is again, this project is very likely to be delayed, probably about two years. On top of that is having heard all of your concerns at the January meeting and tonight as well. I've asked my staff to look into whether or not we can do an EIR, an environmental impact report, and that came back in the affirmative. Of course, I'll need the support of my colleagues, but I do not think that will be a problem. When we do the environmental impact report, all of your comments will be addressed. Safety coming out of driveways, speed limits, horse impacts, noise impacts, air quality impacts, and pretty much anything else that you have a concern about will be addressed in the environmental impact report. To do the environmental impact report will probably take a good 14 to 18 months. So if I had to put my finger on it, we're looking at about three and a half years before we even get started on this project. But I will make this commitment to you, and I know my colleagues support this as well as staff. We will keep you apprised every single step of the way. And if you feel that there's something you don't know, you're welcome to email me directly. My, my email address is on the city website and will be very responsive. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It was, it was very long. What I had to say, however, it appears that the folks in Los Ranchitos took a lot of time to put their concerns together, and I wanted to make sure I took the time to explain exactly where we were at with the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're off to the consent calendar, and since Madam City Clerk, he's did such a great job on the proclamations, I'm going to let you read the consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, happy to do so. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of March 10th and March 24th, 2020. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of December 31st, 2019, January 31st, 2020, and February 29th, 2020. Number five, adopt ordinance 2020-03, being title 17 and title 18 of the Temecula Municipal Code related to small cell wireless facilities located within the public right-of-way and adopt resolution regarding an updated policy for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. Long range planning application number LR19-0498, second reading. Number six, adopt resolution reaffirming and proclaiming the existence of a local emergency relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. Number seven, receive and file the update on the housing element annual progress report to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Number eight, approve participation in the Riverside County Mortgage Credit Certificate MCC program. Number nine, adopt resolution to authorize application for and receipt of local early action planning grant program funds. Long range planning project number LR200360. And number 10, approve list of projects to be funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1 for fiscal year 2020-21.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would any council member like to make a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Nigar and seconded by Councilmember Ron. It will be a roll call vote, by the way.
It will, it will, Mr. Mayor. All of these actions will be by roll call. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah. I.
Councilmember Nigar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron? Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
And Mayor Stewart?
Aye. Okay, so that passes 5-0. I skipped over council reports. Does any, any of the councilmen have a report that they would like to do at this time? I'm seeing no's. Okay, so we'll move on to recess of the city council meeting and go on to the Temecula Community Service District and the successor agency of the, of the redevelopment agency, the Housing Authority and Public Financing Authority. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Schwenk as President of T C S D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, may we take the roll, please?
Yes, Director Edwards? Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Stewart?
Here.
And President Schwenk?
And I'm here. Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight?
We do not.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules, and we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one roll call vote. Actually, we'll be doing a roll call tonight instead of one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
We'll go ahead and conduct the roll call vote now. Director Edwards?
Go ahead and unmute, Mary Ann.
Oops, sorry, I.
Director Nigar? Director Ron?
Aye.
Director Stewart?
Aye.
And President Schwenk?
That's an aye, yes. Thank you. All right, that passes. Do we have a community services director report tonight? Director Hawkins?
We do, Mr. President. Thank you. Before, during and after this COVID-19 crisis, T C S D's focus will always be on safeguarding the health, safety and trust of the community through any of our programs, services, events and/or activities. Like other departments, thanks to our IT folks, we've been able to pivot to a virtual presence with several of our events, such as the Art and Street Painting Festival on June 1st to the 7th. So enjoy our virtual art exhibition, including handcrafted, one-of-a-kind pieces for purchase, ranging from paintings, jewelry, photography and more. Then click on over to our street painting portion to see the chalk artist creations. The best of show winner will be announced June 7th at 4:00 PM. For more information, visit temeculacca.gov backslash art fest. Staff is also busy working with entertainers. The best way to virtually host our Thursday night summer concert series on June 11th, 18th and the 25th. So continue to check out our website, temeculacca.gov backslash virtual CS and social media for the latest information. And not to be left out, Friday night movies in the park have also gone virtual. So on June 12th, 19th and 26th, grab your family responsibly. Picnic dinner and craft supplies and enjoy our Friday night movie picks from the comfort of your home. Again, check out our website and social media for movies and craft videos. And finally, I share with you one of my favorite quotes by a young poet who left this world much too soon, but had such a unique life perspective. And really, we should all be well-served to keep in mind. And it's simply to remember to play after every storm. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Hawkins. A very fitting quote for tonight. I see maybe a comment from Councilmember Nigar. Yep?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just, Director Hawkins, you're probably all over this with your staff, and it seems like a ways out there. But are we thinking about the Fourth of July fireworks and contingency plans? I, I don't expect that, that we're not going to be able to gather by then, but I cannot see canceling the Fourth of July if, if that's in place. What do you think?
Well, all of our steps have been measured, and as you know, we take our cancellations very seriously, and we're not trying to look too far out. So I just went over our June events, but let me just assure you and the, and the public that T C S D is looking to just safeguard our experiences. And so whatever we do, be it virtually or whatnot, it's going to be done to our standards. And so whatever we do, it's going to be special. So we're just going to make sure that we focus on the health, safety and the trust of our community. But we have contingencies and contingencies for contingencies. But rest assured, we're going to do it the Temecula way.
Okay, Director, please keep us posted. I know it seems like a long way away, but whether there's nobody in the park or whether they're watching from their cars or from their houses, we got to have fireworks. So just keep us posted, okay?
Absolutely. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Nigar. Director Hawkins, I just want to say really quick, just a big hearty thank you to you and, and your team and, and just really being able to pivot the way you have with, with our programming. And I know it's not everything we wanted it to be and everything we had planned for, but everything that I'm seeing and things I'm hearing and, and seeing some of what our contract instructors are doing is just, is pretty phenomenal given circumstances. I just want to say thank you to you and your staff.
I, I appreciate it, and if you didn't know beforehand, we basically have the best community services department in the region, and I think we're proving it right now. So, thank you.
I think he's being too modest, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say, when you think of all the things that community service does, all the events, the parades, Friday nights, everything, all the summer series, it's amazing that they have been able to switch so many of those things over. And it seemed like overnight, Kevin. I know it didn't seem like overnight to you. But to me, it, it was such a quick turnaround to get so many things up online and activities for the children. And I'm very, very proud of you, and I would go so far as to say, we've got the best community service department and team in the country. So I think you're being too modest.
Amen.
Without a doubt. All right, thank you very much. Any other comments from any other directors right now while we're on it? Okay. General Manager's report?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next Temecula Community Services District meeting, which will be Tuesday, May 12th at 5:30 PM.
All right, so I will call to order the meeting of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency and the city council. Madam City Clerk, since we're still in virtual mode, could you please do a roll call?
Yes, Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Schwenk?
Here.
And Chairperson Stewart?
I am here. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, so we'll move on to the joint calendar. All matters under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be acted by a roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless a member of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. The only item is item number 12. Approve Sixth Amendment to the disposition of the Development Agency for Old Town Square Marketplace Development between the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula and the Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a motion, please?
No approval.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
Director Schwenk?
Aye.
Chairperson Stewart?
Aye. So that passes five zero. So now we're off to, do we have any director, executive directors' reports?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do we have any board of directors' reports? Seeing none. I will adjourn this meeting until May twelfth. All right, we do not have a Housing Authority meeting. I will now call to order the meeting for the Public Financing Authority. Madam City Clerk, take another roll call.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Schwenk?
Here.
Chairperson Stewart?
Here. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by a roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Financing Authority request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Today, we have one item, item number thirteen, Approval of the Joint Action Minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion, please?
No approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do the roll call, please.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
Director Schwenk?
Aye.
Chairperson Stewart?
Aye. All right, that passes five zero. Do we have an executive, executive director's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Do any of my colleagues have a report? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting to May twelfth and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Today, we have three public hearings. Madam City Clerk, since we are in virtual setting, please, could you share the rules and public, rules for public hearings and public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before or during a public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner described in the important notice at the top of the agenda. If they challenge any of the projects in court, they may be limited to raising only those issues they or someone else raised in the written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. In addition, this meeting is being conducted in a manner that is consistent with executive order N two nine two zero. The meeting may be viewed and public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda.
Thank you. So the first public hearing is item number fourteen, Approval of Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One Community Development Block Grant. Annual Action Plan Funding. Can I hear a staff report, please? Ms. Lynn?
Yes. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Go ahead and start that. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of the council. It is great to see all of you. I'm here tonight to present the twenty twenty dash twenty-one Community Development Block Grant, or C D B G, Annual Action Plan. A helpful hint for everyone with us today in our virtual setting, if you minimize, minimize the gallery view of the participants, you will be able to see my presentation a little bit better. First, let me provide a very brief background of our C D B G program. C D B G is a federally funded program that strives to create the development of viable urban communities by promoting, preserving, and assisting in the development of affordable housing, improving and expanding public infrastructure and facilities, providing and improving access to public services. C D B G activities must meet one of the three national objectives that are listed on the screen. Funding in the City of Temecula is typically allocated towards the first objective, activities that benefit low and moderate income persons. In two thousand and twelve, city council adopted its first consolidated plan to become an entitlement city, which authorized Temecula to receive C D B G funds directly from the federal government. Our C D B G program is guided by two main types of documents, the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. The consolidated plan is a five-year plan that is used as a general framework for the city to assess its housing and community development needs and to identify its priority projects for its funding. It also includes market analysis, needs assessment, strategic plan, and assessment of their housing. Each project or program that is funded through the C D B G program must meet at least one of the consolidated plan goals or priorities that were approved by city council in two thousand and seventeen. Consolidated plan has identified eleven priorities, which is a lot, and the first five are on the screen. But the priorities are intended to be broad in order to remain flexible over the life of the consolidated plan. As the needs of the city may change, each funded program must meet at least one of these priorities. Promote the development of affordable housing, preserve the existing affordable housing stock, ensure equal access to housing opportunity, provide public services for low and moderate income residents, provide public services for residents with special needs, provide public services for the homeless and those at risk of homelessness, provide public services for seniors and veterans, improve neighborhoods, public facilities and infrastructure, promote economic opportunity, amend the city's land use and zoning code to promote housing, and improve access to public facilities for individuals with disabilities. As I mentioned, these are meant to be very broad and encompassing so that the city can remain flexible over the five-year period. During the last consolidated plan cycle, we learned that being too specific limited our options. So now I will hone in on next year's twenty twenty dash twenty-one Annual Action Plan. While the consolidated plan provides the overarching framework for our C D B G goals and activities, each subsequent action plan defines specific projects for each program year and how the city intends to utilize the allotted federal funds to address national objectives and priority needs identified in the con plan. HUD requires extensive community outreach prior to the adoption of the annual action plan each year. During our application period, staff held two technical workshops in December to assist applicants on the application process. Staff met with the Finance Committee consisting of Mayor Stewart and Mayor Portem Edwards on March tenth for funding recommendations, which are reflected in the annual action plan I'm presenting today. We also had a thirty-day public review period, which ends tonight, and tonight we have a public hearing with the entire city council. We are expected to receive five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars in C D B G funding for twenty twenty-one, which is very slightly higher than our current allocation. The allocation is broken up into three main areas. The city can spend up to twenty percent of the allocation, approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, on administrative costs. This includes our consultant's time and a portion of staff time that it takes to administer the program. A maximum of fifteen percent, or approximately eighty-four thousand dollars, may be allocated towards public services, and the remainder, approximately three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, may be allocated towards capital improvement projects. The city received ten public service funding requests. The city also received one request from Habitat for Humanity for housing activities that may utilize capital funds, which I will discuss later in the presentation. As I mentioned, we have a maximum of approximately eighty-four thousand dollars that can be allocated towards public services. The C D B G funds are spent entirely on low and moderate income Temecula residents. The slide before you demonstrates the Finance Committee's recommendation. As such, the funding recommendations are as follows. Five thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars for the Assistance League of Temecula Valley for their Operation School Bell program. Fifty-four ninety-one for the Boys and Girls Club of Southwest County for their before and after-school care program. Fifty-four ninety-one for canine support teams for their Service Dogs for Disabled Persons program. Twenty thousand dollars for the city's homeless prevention and diversion program. Fifty-four ninety-one for the Community Mission of Hope's Housing Resource Center. Twenty thousand dollars for the Fair Housing Council of Riverside County for their comprehensive fair housing program. Fifty-four ninety-one for Hospice of the Valleys for their senior assistance program. Fifty-four ninety-one for Riverside Area Rape Crisis Center for the Anti-Violence Education and Crisis Intervention Program. Fifty-four ninety-one for Safe Alternatives for Everyone for their Creating Safe Families program. And fifty-four ninety-one for Voices for Children for their Court Appointed Special Advocate Program, or CASA. The remainder of our C D B G allocation, approximately three hundred and sixty-four thousand, can be used towards infrastructure projects. As I mentioned earlier, the city received one application for housing activities from Habitat for Humanity for fifty thousand dollars. This is the sixth year that Habitat for Humanity has applied for C D B G funding. Because of the demonstrated need for these services in the community to keep homes affordable, the Finance Committee recommends funding Habitat with fifty thousand dollars for capital improvements. And the remainder will be allocated to the implementation of an ADA Transition Plan project. While it is not reflected in this presentation nor a part of what council is approving this evening, I would be remiss not to mention the additional allocation of C D B G funded, funding that will be allocated to the city as part of the Federal Cares Act. The city will receive an additional three hundred and twenty-nine thousand C D B G allocation, aptly dubbed C D B G C B, specifically for COVID nineteen response. HUD is still formulating the rules and regulations, but you can expect for me to come back to city council next month with the required actions to approve the spending of that allocation based on the needs of the community. With that, staff recommends that city council approve the twenty twenty twenty-one Annual Action Plan as an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under the federal Community Development Block Program. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Lynn. Does any of my colleagues have any questions for Lynn?
No question, but I have, I do have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, if you notice that there was a twenty-five, or twenty thousand dollar allocation for, is it the Riverside County Fair Housing Council or something like that, and that is typical. They provide us with tremendous services seeking housing for Temecula residents, particularly homeless and such. And they actually probably spend more than that on the services they provide to us. So that is just a small reimbursement for, you know, partial reimbursement for what they do for us. So we really need their services and we appreciate their services. If you're wondering why there was such a large allocation for that one entity, and typically it's that way every year, but I just wanted to clarify.
All right, thank you. Okay, so no other comments, then we will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have five public comments.
Right.
Under public hearings, they're allowed five minutes each. The first comment is from Jennifer Richard. And she writes, Voices for Children would like to thank the council for providing C D B G funding to support our court-appointed special advocate or CASA program. Voices for Children is the only court-appointed special advocate program authorized by the court to provide CASA volunteers in Riverside County. CASAs play an important role in transforming the lives of children in foster care who have been abused, abandoned, or neglected. CASAs typically serve one child or sibling group at a time, unlike other child welfare professionals who often serve large caseloads of families. In many cases, the CASA is the one consistent adult present in the life of their child, of their case child. In light of COVID nineteen, the role of the CASA has never been more critical. Children in foster care have experienced trauma and uncertainty in their lives. And now the uncertainty in our local communities are compounding the instability that is already prevalent in their lives. We know that during this time, children will reach out to their CASA for support, especially because they are experiencing abrupt losses of people and places upon which they may have sought comfort. They are attending school with familiar teachers and friends. Their visits were with siblings and family members have been limited. They may not have easy access to mental health services. We also know that tumultuous times like these often create unhealthy family dynamics that may result in even more children at risk and an increase in the number of children entering foster care. CASAs are providing a lifeline for children and their caregivers, as well as another set of ears for social workers on the court. There is a nationwide concern that children in foster care are more at risk now during COVID nineteen crisis. Many caregivers are experiencing stress due to the economic consequences of social distancing. Before the pandemic, children's attendance at school and daycare provided a modest safety net to help identify children who might be experiencing abuse or neglect. In those interactions, someone outside of the home might spot a bruise and ask how things were going. During physical distancing, that oversight is gone. CASA volunteers may be the only adult who is in frequent contact with their case child during this time. As mandated reporters, their observations and reports to the court are critical in protecting these children. In the coming months, as restrictions are lifted, child welfare professionals anticipate a spike in child abuse reports and an increase in the number of children entering foster care. Sadly, this means children may remain in abusive situations longer and may experience ongoing abuse. Because CASAs focus on one child or one sibling group at a time, they are well positioned to advocate formally through their written court reports and informally through communication with social workers to ensure that children receive services specific to their needs. We are preparing to meet the needs of these children and provide them with the unparalleled support of a CASA. Voices for Children is grateful for the grant funds that have been allocated to our CASA program in the prior year, and we respectfully request that the council follow the recommendations to provide a C D B G grant again this year. The next comment is from Melanie House. The entire Hospice of the Valleys team appreciates the opportunity to apply for funding as well. Thank the City of Temecula for supporting our organization in the past. For over thirty-five years, it has been our mission to provide the best end-of-life care to our community, the type of care we would want our own families to receive. We are applying for C D B G funds to support our senior assistance program, which offers direct hospice care to terminally ill senior citizens and the severely disabled, along with their families living in the City of Temecula. Funds received would help pay for unreimbursed supplies and provisions such as incontinent supplies, fully electric bed rentals, over-bed tables, medication co-pays, bereavement, and medication delivery services. Since a majority of our patients are seniors on a fixed and limited income, Hospice of the Valleys does not believe in adding to the burden of patients or their families by asking for reimbursements or co-pays that are not covered by insurance. For example, there is a Medicare five-dollar copay for each medication that each of our patients are prescribed. However, with our community's help, Hospice of the Valleys does not ask our patients to pay the medication copay. During times when end of life is imminent, we do not want our patients and their families to incur yet another expense. Our goal is to ensure no one is turned away or provided with limited hospice care simply due to their inability to pay. Our compassionate care also includes, but is not limited to, personal visits by physicians, nurses, home health aides, social workers, spiritual care advisors, and bereavement support services to the family for at least thirteen months after the patient has passed. Thank you for your consideration in supporting our mission for caring for the terminally ill residents in the City of Temecula. The next comment is from Shelley Figueroa. Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of the council. Thank you for hearing my public comment. I hope you and your families are well and safe during this unprecedented health crisis. This is a challenging time for everyone, including nonprofits. While our clubhouses are currently closed during the stay-at-home order, we are working diligently to be prepared to open our doors when it is safe to do so for our youth as parents prepare to go back to work. Each afternoon, over thirty thousand Temecula children leave school, many of whom go home to an empty house with no supervision for three to six hours. Research from the U.S. Department of Justice shows that youth-related crime doubles between the after-school hours of three to eight P M. The Boys and Girls Club of Southwest County has successfully provided needed programs at the Pachanga Great Oak Site in Temecula for many years. C D B G funds will be used to support a minimum of twenty youth from low, moderate-income families for disadvantaged circumstances in our before-and-after-school programs. Boys and Girls Clubs programs fill the gap in the morning before school and after school before parents return home from work. These needed programs allow parents and guardians to participate in the labor force. Along with the economic impact to parents and families, there is a peace of mind that comes with knowing their children are in a safe, nurturing, and enriching environment. Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and members of the city council for your consideration. We look forward to being a part of the reopening and resurgence of our beautiful Temecula community. The next speaker is Dorcas Shakman. Assistance League would like to thank the City of Temecula for all the support that has been provided to our organization for the past thirty years. Our volunteer members continually provide many services to the students and families that reside in our community. Tonight, we are asking that the city council approve the award of Community Development Block Grant Funds for our main philanthropic program, Operation School Bell. The two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty activities for this program were completed in October, and a total of two thousand five hundred and fifty-four students were provided with new school clothing. Five hundred and seventy-eight of these students attended school in the Temecula Valley School District. Each year, these children return to school without adequate shoes and clothing. Some are ridiculed and bullied because of their appearance. Others suffer silently as their self-esteem plummets along with their academic success. Operation School Bell seeks to directly meet this basic need through the supervision of new clothing, new school clothing. Qualified students attend shopping events that are held at the local Kohl's department stores. Parents and educators report that having appropriate school clothing is a boost to the child's self-esteem and helps to build the com- and helps to build the confidence that is important as students move into middle and high, high school grades. Most importantly, having the proper school clothing strengthens the likelihood that these students will continue to attend school and receive the education that is so greatly needed to prepare them to live productive lives. Although we don't at this time know what the impact on this program will be in the new school year, we are committed to continue to provide and to expand this program to better serve the needs of our community. Thank you again for your support. And our last speaker is Tammy Marine. This is for the staff recommendation on CDBG that will be voted on tomorrow night. Please let me know if you have any questions. Here is my public comment. On behalf of Habitat for Humanity in Lynn Valley, I want to thank the mayor and council members for your consideration in approving the staff and committee recommendations of CDBG funds. If funded, our allocation would go to home repairs for low-income individuals. At a time when home is everything, it is an honor to support the city's desire to serve its residents. These repairs are critical in nature. Most of the clients we serve are low-income seniors, allowing them to age in place. We celebrate our longstanding partnership with the city and hope to continue to collaborate on a program that has profound ramifications to the individual, the neighborhood, and the community at large. Maintaining our existing housing stock is a key component to solving the housing crisis, and we appreciate your thoughtfulness in making these key decisions. Thank you for, thank you also for your stellar leadership during this trying time. The mayor and other council members, in addition to our city manager and staff, are seen and heard in such a positive way, and as a Temecula resident, I feel so supportive because of your collective leadership. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on this item.
All right, so I will now close the public hearing. And do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
With approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. So that passes five-zero. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The second public hearing is item number fifteen, Adopt Ordinance, Amending Title Seventeen to the Temecula Municipal Code pertaining to the accessory dwelling units. Could I please have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. And do you see the title slide?
No.
You see it now?
Nope.
No.
I know it worked when you practiced, Matt.
Yeah. Heartbeat is racing.
It's okay, we got someone coming down the hall now, so stand by.
Got it.
There it is.
It worked. Fantastic. Okay, everyone sees the title slide?
We do.
Okay, perfect. So this is planning application LR nineteen dash fifteen ninety-six, accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. There were a series of bills, and I'm not gonna read all of them, that were signed into law in October of two thousand nineteen, amending Government Code Section six-five-eight-five-two-point-two. And those laws went into effect January first, two thousand twenty. Um, the new laws require updates to the city's existing ADU ordinance. And as you'll see, as I go through the presentation, the intent of the laws is to remove barriers to the construction of the ADUs, to make it much easier for them to be built in the city. So some basics on ADUs. Um, accessory dwelling units provide complete independent living facilities for one or more persons with a max size of twelve hundred square feet. Junior ADUs are smaller with a max size of five hundred square feet, and they're attached to the primary dwelling. And these spaces include living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation facilities. Um, so this is a graphic that we, um, borrowed from the city of Calabasas. Uh, it's an illustration of the different types of ADUs that could be built. So we have detached, which is a pre-standing structure. Attached, where the ADU shares at least one wall with the primary home. An interior ADU, where it's built from the existing converted space of the home. You could have a garage conversion or a unit built above the garage. So, uh, the new regulations affecting the city's ordinance, it allows by right for both an ADU and a junior ADU on a single-family lot. So these would be allowed in all residential zones in the city. Uh, creates a building permit-only process for certain ADUs and junior ADUs based on square footage. It limits the collection of diff fees, limits the number of parking spaces that can be required, and also limits HOA authority to restrict ADUs. So if you're eligible for the building permit-only process, then you're allowed one ADU and a junior ADU per lot. For detached new accessory dwelling unit, the max size is eight hundred square feet. Max height is sixteen feet. You must meet four-foot minimum side and rear yard setbacks. For a junior ADU, you must be within the habitable space of the primary structure. The max size is five hundred square feet, and junior ADUs may share bathroom facilities. In addition, owners of multifamily properties are also eligible for the building permit-only process. So if you own an apartment, um, an apartment complex, they are allowed at least one ADU in the non-livable space of an existing multifamily structure. And those examples of those spaces would include storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, attics, basements, or garages. Those conversions must comply with state building standards. Uh, in addition, uh, they would be allowed up to a twenty-five percent increase of the existing multifamily dwelling units in the building. Also, they're allowed up to two detached ADUs, subject to the sixteen-foot height limit and four-foot setbacks. So there's also a local ordinance pro- process. So for projects that don't qualify for building permit-only process, they must file a planning application. It's a ministerial review only, so there's no public hearing. And the local ordinance may not require a minimum lot size, require owner occupancy, require replacement of parking spaces, or impose a floor area ratio, lot coverage, or other similar requirements that wouldn't allow for at least an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU. Furthermore, uh, with regard to the local ordinance, uh, may not require more than one parking space per ADU. Uh, in addition, a local ordinance may not require parking in any of the following instances: within a half-mile walking distance of public transit, so it'd be a bus stop, within a historic district, uh, an attached ADU or converted accessory structure, garage conversion, or if there's a car-share vehicle within, within one block. With regard to HOAs, homeowners associations may not prohibit or unreasonably restrict construction of ADUs or junior ADUs on single-family lots. Um, and with regard to CEQA, the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA as there is no possibility that this ordinance would have a significant impact on the environment pursuant to State CEQA Guidelines Section fifteen zero six-one V-three. And this was presented to the Planning Commission on February nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and they recommended approval to the City Council by a vote of four-zero. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt an ordinance entitled, and I'll read this, um, in its entirety. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, amending Title Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to delete certain subsections of Section seventeen point zero six point zero five zero pertaining to accessory dwelling units, establishing a new chapter seventeen point two-three pertaining to accessory dwelling units, amending Table seventeen point two-four point zero four zero regarding parking requirements, and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Um, do any of my colleagues have any questions?
I do, actually.
Yes.
Well, Matt, eight hundred square feet minimum. And did it say anything about bathroom facilities, kitchens, running water, anything like that?
So there's both, an, an ADU, which would be a separate, single-family home, twelve hundred square feet. And yes, it would include, uh, living, sleeping, sanitation facilities.
Okay.
And cooking facilities.
But it spelled out, so it doesn't leave any, okay, good.
Right.
Councilmember Nigar?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, question for, uh, for the city attorney. And, and maybe, Matt, part of, uh, you may want to answer it as well, but, Mr. City Attorney, oh, so this is being imposed on us via Sacramento, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, our choices are limited here. We're, we're in essence amending our code because we have to come in, in, in conformance to their mandate, their bills, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, how do they get around? I, I guess you might call it, um, the land use contract that HOAs have made with their residents. Those covenant, how do they just eliminate those, um, and override them?
Well, this isn't the first time that the legislature has required, uh, that HOAs recognize certain, uh, land use, uh, uses that the legislature wants. The most, uh, clear example is, uh, group homes. Uh, the legislature has, for many, many years, said HOAs cannot prohibit certain group homes that comply with state law. So they have, this is not the first time that's occurred. And essentially, the argument is, is that the compelling need for housing is sufficient to, uh, make those impositions on, uh, what would otherwise be a, a private transaction regulating housing within a particular homeowner's group.
Thank you. So, and whether you, Peter, or you, Matt, take this question. So it appears that the exemptions for a parking space, when you look at them, it pretty much makes an accommodation for no parking space. It pretty, i- it really gets you to a point where there's really, uh, no excuse to deny this, uh, because of parking. But whether or not somebody uses those, you know, those exemptions, and there becomes a parking problem, what do we do? It's not likely somebody's gonna walk a half a mile to a bus stop. We know that. We know that, that the average distance somebody's gonna walk to a bus stop. Studies have been done on this, ad hoc, an item, okay? We can, you know, uh, Mr. Schwank with RTA, I'm sure you can get that information. This is not old news. Um, people will walk maybe an eighth of a mile, maybe a quarter of a mile, but they're not going to walk a half a mile. So anyway, um, what do we do in a, in a, in a typical neighborhood? Paloma del Sol, uh, Rancho del Sol, uh, Paso del Sol, where, where these units get built eventually, and there's no parking? What, what, what's, are we just out of luck?
We've asked ourselves that same question. Uh, the planning department, as we've gone through these bills and updated our ordinance, we have a lot of questions with regard to that. The only instance where we can require parking is with a detached accessory dwelling unit, we can include one, we can require one parking spot.
And, yeah, and I heard that, where is that parking spot supposed to be? Uh, i- i- in a single-family neighborhood, where are you supposed to get it? Are you supposed to put it on your land somewhere?
Yeah, anywhere on the lot, and it can be within setbacks.
Okay, and how big does a parking space have to be?
Typically, a parking space, um, is nine by eighteen.
Okay.
So they'd widen the driveway, perhaps.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have a question, too. Um, I noticed in the, uh, the state, uh, laws that twelve hundred square feet was allowable, but then you kept saying eight hundred square feet. So what, what detached is allowable? What's the number?
So the differentiation with the eight hundred square feet was for the building permit-only process. So if someone comes in with building plans that are eight hundred square feet or less, they're eligible for the building permit only. So that means it doesn't even come to the planning department, although we do a courtesy review to look at the architecture. But basically, they, they just submit for a building permit.
Hmm.
If it's above the eight hundred, up to twelve hundred, then there's a planning application that's required.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ms. Nigar?
Thank you, uh, just a, a quick follow-up. How does this, um, relate to, let's say, a front or side yard setback? Uh, we have a driveway adjacent to the driveway as a front yard. Um, I, I can't widen the driveway in a traditional way, so I encroach into the front yard. Um, is that now allowed?
Well, a single-family home is required to have two covered spaces. So all single-family homes have a twenty-by-twenty garage. Hopefully, the depth of that garage would allow parking in front of the garage door for the accessory dwelling unit in the back. I know that.
But, but can you encroach into a, to a front yard? Can you encroach to a front yard or a side yard?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so you can, it's like tantamount to parking on your front lawn.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One more question. I was thinking also that if you did a garage conversion, you're taking away those two covered parking spaces.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right, so you, you basically have to park in the front yard.
Yes, and with a garage conversion, we're not allowed to require replacement parking.
Wow. Thank you, State of California.
It's out of everything.
Yeah. All right, so that being said, any other comments before we make a motion? Okay, I, uh, will ask for a motion here.
Oh, reluctantly, I'll move the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. We're gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? We do not. I think you're muted.
Yep, she's muted.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, we do not have any public comments. You're welcome to close the public hearing, and I'm happy to go ahead and, um, read the title of the ordinance on the city attorney's behalf.
It's closed.
So reluctantly, I'll move that the, uh, ordinance be read into the record.
And ditto for the second.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, amending Title Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to revise regulations to conform with density bonus law, California Government Code Section six-five-nine-one-five, and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that motion was by Councilmember Nigar with Councilmember Edwards, second. We'll go ahead and conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right, that passes five-zero. All right, next, we have, um, item number seventeen, to consider federal guidelines, state framework, and county, pardon me? Did I miss something?
Item number sixteen.
Okay, no, that was item number sixteen. The density bonus?
That was the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. All right, so I guess we have the third public hearing is item number sixteen, adopt the ordinance, amending Title Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to conform to the density bonus ordinance law under the California Government Code, Long Range Project Number LR nineteen dash fifteen ninety-seven. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may. Can you see the screen?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. This is LR nineteen dash ninety-seven, Density Bonus Ordinance. So state density bonus law was first adopted in nineteen seventy-six with the intent to increase the production of affordable housing. Um, state density bonus law requires local agencies to grant an increase in density based on the number of affordable housing units proposed, and also allows applicants to receive incentives and concessions. So if someone comes in with an affordable housing project eligible for a density bonus, they would be eligible for these incentives and concessions. And an example would be reduced parking requirements, or, or smaller building setbacks, or reduced, uh, or increased height to accommodate the, uh, the additional units. Assembly Bill seventeen sixty-three was signed into law October two thousand nineteen and became effective January first, two thousand twenty. The new law required- The new law requires updates to the city's existing density bonus ordinance. And specifically, the new law creates a new category of housing eligible for density bonus. And that would be projects or developments with one hundred percent affordable units. And, uh, in addition to that, um, projects with a hundred percent affordable units where all of them are for lower income households, they'd be eligible for an eighty percent density bonus. So you are doing that math correctly, that if a project comes in and there's a hundred units, they could increase it to a hundred and eighty units. If the initial one hundred are for low income households. In addition, AB seventeen sixty-three reduces the amount of parking for qualifying housing types. And those housing types would be special needs housing and supportive housing projects. Uh, parking ratios are reduced to zero if they're within one half mile of a transit stop or a bus stop. If a hundred percent affordable project is located within a half mile of a major transit stop, then they're allowed a height increase of three or more stories or thirty-three feet. So a transit stop would be a bus stop and then a major transit stop, uh, would have, um, bus stops at fifteen minute intervals and we don't have any of those in the city yet. Some additional amendments, so in addition to the state standards, the city proposes to add language to require affordable housing units to be constructed concurrently with or prior to the construction of the market rate units. And then also requires that the affordable units are integrated with the market rate unit. So we didn't want developments to come in where the affordable units are segregated from the rest of the development. With regard to SEQA, the proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQUAs. There's no possibility that this ordinance would have a significant impact on the environment pursuant to state SEQUAS guideline sections fifteen zero six one B three. This ordinance was also taken to the planning commission on February nineteenth and they recommended approval to the city council by a vote of four oh. And with that, staff, staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Temecula Municipal Code to conform with density bonus law under the California Government Code Section six five nine one five. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you for that staff report. Do my colleagues have any questions? A lot of head shaking, so I will now go ahead and open the public hearing. Adam, city clerk, do we have any comments?
We do not, Mr. Mayor. You are welcome to go ahead and close the public hearing. And for the record, I will note that, um, the previous uh, action item on the ordinance reading will be corrected to reflect as Matt Peters read it into the record during the presentation. And I will go ahead and read the current ordinance into the record, um, on behalf of the city attorney. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending Title seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to revise regulations to conform with the density bonus law, California Government Code Section six five nine one five, and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, this public hearing is closed. And Mayor, uh, Mr. Nagar. I'm used to saying Mayor Nagar. All right, go ahead.
So, um, just to comment against Sacramento imposing itself on all of our local land use decisions. And, um, y- you know, it's very difficult because, um, most of our community will not know of this until it begins to happen. And, uh, it's hard to just get, to get the word out. I don't know that this item and the previous item will happen right away, but, um, it's just very sad. I understand what Sacramento's trying to do and there's many ways to do it, but, um, destroying a city by taking over our zoning is not the way to do it.
All right. So can I get a motion, please?
Reluctantly, so moved.
So it's been moved and seconded. Please do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nagar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
Council, uh, Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right, so that passes five zero. So next we have item number seventeen. Consider federal guidelines, state framework and county public health orders for reopening post COVID nineteen and provide general direction regarding lo- local preferences for the same. At the request of Councilmember Nagar and Schwank, since we are in virtual setting, um, this will take some time. I want to share some housekeeping notes for, uh, first. Um, on this item, uh, hold on one second. Was I supposed to let the, uh, Schwank and Nagar make their comments at that point?
Um, I, I think you're good, Mr. Mayor. Um, since this is a virtual setting and this item will take some time, um, we're just sharing some housekeeping notes, um, and letting folks know that on this item, we will be giving, um, first a staff report followed by council questions of staff, then public comments and then council comments. After that, the city manager will provide some information about the issue of parks and parking lots, after which council will discuss and provide direction on that particular issue. After that, we will have general discussion and direction about everything else. Since this item came at the direction of council members Nagar and Sh- and Schwank, you will be giving them deference, uh, during the questions and comments to go, to have them go first when we get to that portion of the item.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, uh, I think it'd be appropriate that after staff gave their report, the council, Member Schwank and I be able to uh, kind of cite the reasons why we put this on the.
Right.
Yeah, supposed to waiting till, till later.
Yeah, no, as soon as the staff report is over, you guys take it.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so can I have the staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The COVID nineteen pandemic resulted in numerous stay-at-home orders across the nation. Residents and businesses in the city are now subject to several emergency executive orders issued by the governor and health orders issued by the Riverside County Public Health Officers. These orders have been in place since early March. While the importance of public health continues to be a priority, conversations around reopening cities, states and the nation for economic purposes have also begun. At the federal level, the president announced a three phased approach to guide states in their reopening efforts. The federal administration does not have a national stay-at-home order in place and did not provide a specific timeline in the guidelines for a proposed reopening by the states. However, gating criteria must be met before the phases are implemented. The gating criteria includes a downward trajectory of symptoms reported within a fourteen day period, a downward trajectory of documented cases for positive tests within a fourteen day period, and treatment of patients without crisis care and a robust testing program for at-risk health workers. After these conditions are met, the three phases may be implemented at the federal level. At the state level, the governor announced a six-point framework that will be utilized to determine when the state will reopen. The current state's stay-at-home order does not specify an end date while a precise timeline for modifying the order was not provided. The governor indicated that the six factors that will help determine the timeframe are the ability to do the following. Monitor and protect communities through testing, contact tracing, isolating and supporting those who are positive and exposed. Preventing infection in people who are at risk for more severe COVID nineteen. Hospital and health system to handle surges, development of therapeutics to meet demand. Businesses, schools and childcare facilities to support physical distancing and the ability to reinstate certain measures if necessary. At the county level, in Riverside County, the stay-at-home order is in place until April thirtieth, twenty twenty. That order may be lifted, modified or extended at the direct, at the discretion of the Riverside County Public Health Officer, Dr. Cameron Kaiser. Under state law, the city is bound by this health order as well as the governor's executive orders and does not have the authority to lift them or modify them. Our city attorney will elaborate on this in just a moment. While the county of Riverside has not referenced any formal plans to reopen regionally, it is expected that the county at some point will be considering reopening as well. The city of Temecula has a strong interest in the conditions under which the region may be reopened. Not only from a public health standpoint, but also from an economic perspective. Similar to other cities throughout the nation, Temecula has economically suffered under this pandemic with negative impacts being felt by every segment of our community, our residents, our businesses and our tourism industry. While the city may be limited from a legal standpoint, it still retains the ability to proactively help shape the reopening plans of the county by sharing its thoughts and assist in the overall economic recovery efforts. And tonight, the council can give that direction to do just that. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my portion of the staff report and I am now going to turn it over to the city attorney who will provide foundational information on this item and also answer the questions you previously provided related to the legal authority of the state and county, the relationship between the city and county public health and the application of the Attorney General memo issued yesterday. Peter?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As the city clerk indicated, the governor declared a state of emergency in the state with respect to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the governor has issued several executive orders. And along with the governor's executive order, the Riverside County Health Officer has issued several health orders, uh, which between all of these orders have prohibited gatherings of people within, uh, the county of Riverside, closed non-essential businesses and required people to wear masks in public. These orders and these restrictions were imposed by the governor and the county health officer. They were not imposed by the city of Temecula. And because of that, the city of Temecula does not have the authority to lift these orders or to make, uh, substantial changes to them. The government code, uh, section eight six two five authorizes the governor to declare a state of emergency in, in uh, the state for, uh, disasters including epidemic. So that's the authority that he used to make these executive orders. Once the, uh, state of emergency is declared, uh, the governor has broad statutory authority to exercise all the police powers that the state possesses, which are necessary to deal with the emergency. And the courts, in looking at, uh, the past actions and declared states of emergency and executive orders tell us that the exercise is valid if it is reasonably necessary to protect the order, safety, health morals and general welfare of the society, a very broad, uh, uh, standard for allowing these to go forward. Uh, Health and Safety Code, Section one oh one three five provides the Riverside County Health Officer uh, with authority over public health matters within the city, within cities and specifically within the city of Temecula. Uh, this section provides that when the governing body of a city, the council, uh, consents by resolution to the county health officer, uh, being the health officer for the city, the health officer is, uh, authorized to enforce, um, and observe in the city, uh, quote, orders and quarantine regulations prescribed by the department and other regulations issued under the Health and Safety Code. So that's the authority by which the health officer can impose, uh, these requirements on the city of Temecula. Uh, on the night the city incorporated on December one, uh, nineteen eighty-nine, the council adopted a resolution consenting to the Riverside County Health Officer providing those health officer services for the city of Temecula. And I might point out that it's not only, uh, dealing with epidemics and pandemics and, and uh, disasters such as we're experiencing right now, but it's also the enforcement of all of the routine day-to-day health laws, uh, such as those relating to, uh, testing the, the, uh, safety and the health in, uh, restaurants and other food type, uh, facilities. So under these, um, orders of the governor and, uh, the, uh, public health officer, um, the city does not have the authority to lift those or to modify them. Uh, we understand the frustration that people feel at being subject to these orders and we understand, you know, the economic, uh, problems that occurs as a result of these. Uh, but, uh, the council's only authority is to adopt more stringent requirements. The council can adopt, uh, more restrictive requirements, but it cannot lessen those requirements and it cannot adopt, um, uh, a, a less restrictive, uh, regulation for that. Um, and with that, uh, that's really the, the, uh, legal basis on which the governor and the public health officer are acting with respect to Temecula. Now, you also asked about the Attorney General William Barr's memorandum that was issued yesterday uh, with respect to dealing with the, uh, COVID nineteen crisis. Um, uh, there is nothing in that memorandum that imposes new requirements on the city or on other state and local governments. Essentially, what the Attorney General did is he said that the Justice Department will prioritize those uh, cases in which somebody is acting illegally to profit from the epidemic. Um, and they will also monitor and if necessary, take action against state and local directives that may violate individual rights or discriminate against religious institutions or otherwise interfere, uh, with the national economy. So basically, what the Attorney General is saying is that they are, um, gonna monitor what's going on. They're gonna look carefully at whether or not religious institutions have been, um, adversely affected in violation of federal law or in violation of the constitution and take action where necessary. But again, as I say, he did not impose any new restrictions on the city or state and local governments throughout the nation. Um, I will point out that in Riverside County, there have now been two cases, uh, at the trial court level dealing with uh, the restrictions from the governor's executive order and the county health officer's executive order. Um, one is where the, uh, Riverside County obtained a temporary restraining order against a church from holding in-person uh, religious services. And the second one, uh, that was in Riverside Superior Court. And the second one was a federal court case um, in which, uh, the, uh, tri- the court, the federal district court denied a restraining order against the county uh, that would prohibit, uh, in, in-person, uh, services at a church. So again, those issues have been, uh, dealt with, at least on the trial court level in Riverside County. The Attorney General is saying, we will look closely at all issues relating to individual rights, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, free exercise of religion and if necessary, take some action. So I think that provides you with the legal basis for the orders that we're seeing and, uh, what you can do. Now, I also want to emphasize, as the city clerk did in her report, that there is nothing that would prevent the city of Temecula from participating in a plan to get everything opened up again. Um, you have every right in the world to say, this is what we think should be done. This is what will help the businesses get started again. Once the, the pandemic subsides or once it's safe enough to open things up. So you can clearly go ahead and, uh, comment on the state plan, comment on potential county plans or, or uh, discuss the, uh, potential reopening of, uh, of the, of the businesses within the county with the county and with the state officials. And with that, I'll be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question about what would happen if we just de- decided to defy the county order and just say, open Temecula. What would happen to us?
Um, uh, what would happen is either the California Attorney General or the county council would most likely file an injunction action against the city, uh, to prohibit uh, that order from being implemented. And, um, with that, it would probably reach a trial court within about uh, three to five days for a decision on whether or not that was valid.
Okay. All right, so with that, let's, uh, go ahead and open it up for discussion. I, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we can go ahead and, uh, give Councilmember Nagar and.
Oh, yes.
Schwank an opportunity to go ahead and provide comments?
Yes, please, go ahead. Councilmember Nagar.
Thank you. And, um, good staff report, Randy, and, and good staff report, Peter. You answered, uh, a lot of good questions. Um, it's my understanding we have two things that we're talking about tonight, correct? We're, we're talking about businesses and the economy at Temecula, and then we're also going to be talking about parks and parks and rec. Um, is, is it our desire, Mr. City Manager, to talk about the park issue first?
I, that would be my recommendation that we take that, that item first off the agenda.
Thank you. Zach, you, you good with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so I'll, you know, first, um, uh, everybody's been doing everything they possibly can in a, in a very dynamic situation that I don't think we'd be exaggerating, is sometimes changing hourly. Um, and having to adopt to that hourly has been very much a challenge. And it's interesting because Councilmember Schwank and I have been, um, uh, in contact both together and with staff about issues that are of concern to us. A Councilmember Schwank, cause he's president of, of TCSD, our Parks Department and me, because I just had a. our Parks Department, and me because I just had a general concern. And over our conversations, things keep changing as the days go by. Um, so I just want to mention, or maybe proceed in this fashion as it relates to parks. We now have an umbrella, as the city attorney described, under which we have to operate, that we cannot get outside of that umbrella, uh, no matter what we want to do. Um, Mr. Mayor, you just mentioned what would happen if we defied everything. I can assure you, and I think everybody's been contacted by people who's, who are on that side of the fence and just say, let's just do it. And, um, that's not something we really need to talk about. I don't know how productive that would be. So, within the umbrella, the framework that we have to operate in, which primarily requires, um, uh, I guess tactics or implementing social distancing or masks, et cetera. What I'd like to do is as follows. Now, keep in mind what I just said, what I'm about to say, obviously, will have to fall under the umbrella of the rules established by the people who we have to answer to, not only the governor, but our local health authority. Um, so with that in mind, since we have the authority to open all the parks and par- well, the parks aren't closed, but all the parking lots at the parks, I, I'd like the council to consider doing that and instructing staff to open all the parking lots. Not everybody lives in walking distance of a park. The streets next to the parks anyway are open. People need to recreate. I understand that today, maybe I think a few hours ago, um, we have a release to open the dog parks. So if that's possible, I'd like to get the dog park open. I understand we can't open play equipment at this time, but I'd like us to inquire of the county health, um, official, what's his plan to open play equipment? Why can't we open it? And what's the threshold for opening it? So, um, I think he needs to answer that for us. Um, the same thing applies with pools and splash pads. Um, we're getting into the summer. Kids are out for summer. Um, if they want to go to the splash pad, they might have to wear masks. There may have to be some active social distancing. But again, what is the threshold to use those facilities? And we need to hear from county health. We want to do the right thing, obviously. Nobody here wants to jeopardize anybody's health. Wh- what will enable us to do that? Um, and then there's going to be some special situations that, um, Councilmember Swank had, had mentioned some, some interesting things. How do we, how do we regulate the pump track? How do we regulate the skate park? Um, do we do it by just giving, uh, uh, kids a certain amount of time? They wait in line? Only five can be on the track at one time? Call up, get a line, wait in line? I don't know how that works. But if it can be open, if that's not considered play equipment, and it can be open, and we can regulate that, we need to try to do that. And I'd like to see that open as well. But of course, with all of the restrictions that we're required to abide by. So that's my two cents on the park topic.
All right, Councilmember Zach.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor Steve. Um, you know, just to follow up on that, you know, Mike and I, uh, Councilmember Nagar and I have been talking about this, uh, for a, a week or so, maybe ten days, and, and, you know, throwing out ideas and, and talking to our city manager and our city attorney and trying to figure out, you know, what does this look like? And, um, we opened up parking lots at Margarita Community Park and at Paula Park for tennis courts and our pickleball courts. And, and that was something that came down from the county, and so, so we did that sort of, you know, and I shared this with Councilmember Nagar, you know, sort of reluctantly because, you know, Margarita Park is a destination park, but it's also a community park for residents that live right there. And I didn't want to take away that amenity for those residents that live directly next to that park. So we opened up the park, and you can imagine, uh, what's happened is it's, it's now become a destination park, so everyone's, uh, making their way there. Uh, s- so really, you know, we're sort of in a pickle because people want to get out. But we're not really taking that away, and I hate to, hate to be, you know, t- too negative on it, but the parks are open, you know, and they're just, the parking lots are closed. And, and we did that because we really wanted people to, to focus on their neighborhood and, and to stay close to their neighborhood and, and to not open something up, like, like when we talk about Ronald Reagan Sports Park. How do you manage that when we open that and you have the skate park, uh, the pump track, and then the play equipment? And, um, you know, I had a conversation with Director Hawkins about, you know, how do we protect staff? If we're gonna, if we're gonna have to staff that, that spot now, because it most certainly will be, um, inundated with, with folks. Um, so, uh, you know, how do we, how do we staff that and protect our staff? So, you know, I, I had some concerns, and, and that's really why we brought it here, is to have this conversation. Um, given the fact that we're having one meeting a month, and, and, you know, th- this is ever-changing, you know, almost hourly, uh, at times when, when things are coming down. Uh, you know, May first is just right around the corner, and, and I suspect there'll probably be some changes there. So, you know, having this conversation and, you know, unfortunately, in this, in this virtual setting, but having it in this public setting where we can all have a, have a good conversation is something we wanted to do. Uh, so I'm really interested in hearing, uh, the balance of, uh, everyone's thoughts on this.
All right. Council, uh, Mayor Protam Edwards, what say you?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm sorry if I may interrupt. I, um, I believe the city manager has something to say. And before we get into direction and discussion, we do have an obligation to hear from the public as well.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, and, and to the subcommittee's point, this, these orders do change hourly and daily, and it's, it's been, I know, a bit frustrating chasing these things down and understanding what they mean operationally. Um, Jonathan, I have a, I have a couple slides, um, that are sort of in concert with what the subcommittee, um, and I, and I think it's important in this context to sort of understand the chronology of where we've come. So, uh, April sixth, Riverside County He- Health Order came down where public parking lots to parks shall be closed and shall be accessible only by members of the public within walking distance. So, um, as you heard, as those orders come down, we pivot and we comply. And so we did just that. We closed parking lots to, to the facilities at that point. Next slide, please. Um, by April twentieth, around five o'clock or so, um, the order had changed. And mysteriously, the language that we had previously relied on disappeared and was replaced with new language. And that new language, uh, provided, uh, relaxed orders for communities to consider, uh, surrounding recreational sports like golf, pickleball, tennis, um, hiking, walking, equestrian, bicycling. Those, those have always been allowed, but the golf and the pickleball and tennis kind of caught us off guard. And these were new openings, uh, so to speak, for, for our community. So, uh, the city of Temecula, uh, we have two properties, and, um, and, and next slide, please. We have two properties that, uh, cater to the public with respect to tennis and pickleball. And, um, we quickly pivoted, and we felt it was in our best interest to open those parking lots so folks, uh, could drive to both Margarita Community Park, Paula Park. We opened the restrooms. We opened the tennis courts. And we opened the pickleball courts, um, as, as a, in a response to these, these, these orders that came down. Um, and, uh, and with that, obviously, comes, um, the county put out some additional restrictions for these sports. And so folks are meant, and it's designed to sort of continue to follow the rules of physical and social distancing while they're playing along. And so, uh, we've been monitoring that. We've been in compliance, and as Councilmember Nagar, uh, did mention, um, we were still struggling with, are we allowed to open up all of our parking lots? Because it wasn't clear in the order that came out on April twentieth. So, we spent a good part of the day on the phone with the county, county council, and eventually we did get an opinion that confirmed, um, a suspicion, which was, yes, cities, you can now consider opening your, uh, public parking lots to parks. And, um, it's a local decision. And so they confirmed that, and that was helpful. And, um, and we had mixed feelings. We had a lot of good discussion over if we were ready to do that or if we weren't ready to do that. And, and I just wanted to remind, you know, everyone that the, um, the balance of our, our parking lots to our, our park system are currently remain closed, um, based primarily on discouraging individuals from vehicular travel to our parks and destination parks to minimize health and safety violations and orders surrounding the congregations of people, physical and social distancing and the spread of COVID-19. So, residents have been using the parks. Again, the park itself has always remained open to the public. Uh, individuals have been encouraged to walk, ride, hike, bike, and enjoy and visit the open space. Uh, on-street parking has been always allowed to visit the parks. Um, our observations and, and efforts by the park rangers kind of report back to staff, kind of a mixed use of, of compliance with county and state orders within the parks. Um, we have and we continue to use education and reminders, uh, by the staff when we observe these challenges. So we've de- definitely taken a, a softer approach. We're not writing citations. We're encouraging compliance. And, and we also know and recognize, and I think it's important to mention, that we get, folks are frustrated, and, and everyone needs to get out, and, and we totally get that. So I just wanted, again, to remind everyone, the playgrounds and the benches and the park amenities are currently prohibited from being opened by county health. But the open space and the trails are very much open, as are the tennis and pickleball courts at Margarita and Paula Park, as I mentioned. And then, uh, Councilman Nagar mentioned this, at around four forty-five this evening, um, we did receive an opinion from county, from county council that dog parks, uh, can be considered to be open, again, a local decision, provided that humans maintain six feet of distance and they wear their masks. And I thought it was kind of funny. They also added that the dogs don't need to be six feet apart, or the dogs don't need to wear masks. So in case you were, you were wondering. Um, so tonight, it's our hope that we can, uh, have a discussion about both the balance of our parking lots, uh, that serve our parks, as well as the dog parks, the two that we, uh, operate here in the city limits. And then, I know Kevin Hawkins is standing by and available. If any of the city council members want to, um, ask questions on, uh, details related to observations over this last weekend or over the broader period of the last four or five weeks and what we're seeing out there in our parks. And with that, um, I appreciate the time lent by Councilman Nagar and, and Councilmember Swank. Thank you.
He's on mute.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
I think we want to hear from public comments before we get into our council discussion, so let's go there first.
Absolutely. Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can we confirm with the council that there are no more additional questions of staff, uh, on any of the staff reports?
I do have one more question. Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Yeah, what we did not mention or what we have not heard is about our museums as well, particularly the Children's Museum and, uh, our Temecula Valley Museum. Um, eh, eh, did we get any verdict on that from the county health?
I'll defer to Kevin if he's got a, a affirmative decision, but my, my suspicion is those, those facilities, as designed and as intended, currently are not eligible, uh, for, for being open at this time under the current orders. That would be my, my suspicion.
And your suspicion is correct. They fall under our facilities and other gathering places, similar to our community centers, which haven't been reopened. Um, and we've gone to a virtual platform in terms of our, our museums at this point.
Thank you.
All right. Madam City Clerk.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I am going to definitely beg your indulgence because we have fifty-four comments.
Fifty-four.
So, the good news is that some of them are relatively short. Um, each, uh, comment, um, is allotted the full five minutes because it is a business item. So I will move through this as quickly as possible. The first comment is from Craig Puma. Hello all. I hope you are all safe, happy, and healthy. I heard from a friend of a friend that you will be discussing the reopening of local schools for the use of tennis courts. However, I don't see anything on the city website. I receive emails from the USTA, United States Tennis Association regularly, and received this article today. I thought it would be helpful. That being said, here is my three minutes or less as public comments. I have been a local resident for twenty-one years and have been an avid tennis player, playing weekly most of that time. I am currently up to four days a week, and before COVID-19 required us to stop playing. It is my biggest and most consistent form of healthy exercise for my body and mind. I have stopped playing during the past four weeks due to the tennis court closures in the city, as well as suggestions made by USTA. I urge you to reopen all tennis courts in the city limits, as well as recommend the opening of all courts within the city located at various associations with the guidelines as provided by USTA. We need our sanity back, but we should remain safe. Thank you. The next comment is by Adam Rickerts. We are registered voters and taxpaying residents of Temecula, California. We respectfully request reopening of our city. We will all take precautionary measures for safety, and those that are too uncertain can stay home. But please allow those of us that are healthy and competent to go back to normal life. Please open our businesses, parks, and community pools. The outdoors will only increase our immunity and health. The next speaker is Joanna Ricketts. We are registered voters and taxpaying residents of Temecula. We respectfully request reopening of our city. We will take all precautionary measures for safety, and those that are too uncertain can stay home. But please allow those of us that are healthy and competent to go back to normal life. Please open our businesses, parks, and community pools. The outdoors will only increase our immunity and health. The next speaker is Chris Flores.
My name is Christopher Flores. I am concerned with the immediate opening of Temecula that the protesters on Sunday demanded. I do not believe it's feasible and safe per the orders by Gav- by Gavin Newsom. Riverside County has the second most cases of COVID-19, with Los Angeles County being first. Why do you believe it is essential to open back up? The health and well-being of citizens in Temecula and the capacity of our hospitals are at stake. Do you care about the residents of the city, or do you care about the businesses? Temecula has a large population of senior citizens and middle-aged people. Is it worth putting their well-beings and the safety of families at risk? COVID-19 has killed fifty thousand plus people in four months, whereas the flu kills sixty-two thousand per the entire year, but the flu infects twenty-two to forty million a year, where we are only at one million and fifty thousand plus deaths in four months compared to the twelve months with the flu. It is not safe to open back up, and the numbers prove it. I understand the pressure from small businesses, but there are ways to market their products on apps such as Letgo, eBay, and Etsy, where they can sell them online, or Temecula could launch a website marketplace to sell their products and offer their skill in a safe and protective way. What is being done to ensure the safety of the community against this virus? The reopening also puts many at risk as an asymptomatic individual may infect an at-risk person. Nursing homes and daycare centers will prove to be breeding grounds for the virus and create a much more exponential graph than the one we, than the one we have right now with social distancing. Do you believe, is it, eh, do you believe it's safe to reopen and put thousands at risk for the profit of individuals who own businesses? The next speaker is Lisa Sanchez. I'm a seventeen-year Harveston homeowner and the founder of Friends of Harveston Lake. I appreciate the city's ongoing response to COVID-19, and I urge you to follow state and county directives for a gradual and safe reopening of Temecula businesses, parks, and public spaces. As a California resident, I'm entitled to full and equal access facilities and privileges in all business establishments and public spaces, regardless of my age, gender, disability, medical condition, among others. County health officials have ordered all citizens to practice social distancing and to refrain from large gatherings and contact activities. If some individuals are allowed to violate this directive and parks and businesses fail to implement social disting- those, social distancing, those who wish to avoid contracting COVID-19 will be unable to do so and are hereby, and are thereby denied equal access. Regarding the crowding and social distancing failures at Harveston Lake specifically, we wrote two letters to this council citing the April sixth county order. If a government entity is unable to enforce social distancing at a park or trail, it shall be closed. As of this Sunday, our problems continue. The risk of COVID-19 can't be mitigated by closing a parking lot at Harveston because visitors park on the street. Us people continue to pass well within six feet, often without masks. Those who wish to enjoy the park safely are denied equal access to this public facility. Since protective measures were not taken when they were most needed, we urge the city to act promptly as follows. Prior to any resurgence of COVID-19 cases, one, place one-way signs on saw-horse barricades along the path. Two, enforce the ban- signs on saw-horse barricades along the path. 2. Enforce the ban against skateboards and motorized scooters per the April 6 county order and place signs regarding this ban. 3. To illustrate social distancing, place six-foot signs along the path and at entrances. 4. Since bicycles approach too quickly for others to move, ban bicycles or split the path into a four-foot strip for bikes and a six-foot strip for walkers. 5. For any future increase in the rate of COVID-19 transmission, we reassert our demand for temporary closure of Harveston Lake path, along with closing non-resident street parking. On a personal note, I have walked at Harveston for 17 years, and I lead a Harveston walking group, including many disabled and active seniors. We used to walk for hours and see few others. After the stay-at-home orders, Harveston was suddenly overrun with visitors, forcing us off the path for health reasons. None of us are convalescing, and it is offensive to tell considerate law-abiding citizens to stay off the path if we don't want to get sick, while giving free rein to those who ignore the law and are reckless with their health and that of this community. Thank you for your attention. We await a prompt response. The next speaker is Pam Bailey. I ask that you fight to restore Temecula to the vibrant city that it was two months ago. This shutdown was based on false models regarding the coronavirus death rates. According to the head of the CDC, Dr. Fauci, wrote in his editorial in the New England Journal of Medicine on March 26, 2020, that the case fatality rate may be considerably less than 1%. This suggests that the overall clinical consequences of COVID-19 may ultimately be more akin to a severe seasonal influenza, which has a case fatality rate of 0.1%. That is 1/10 of 1%. We have never shut down America for anything that affects 1% of citizens. Health guidelines may call for additional sanitary measures and quarantine of the sick. Healthy people should not be forced to stay home to save lives. The most vulnerable among us need to protect themselves. They can stay home if they are afraid. Love for our neighbors keeps us home when we are sick. Life is dangerous. We still drive even though people die in car accidents. We still swim even though people drown. The financial, physical, and emotional damage done during this time has affected millions. Is it worth it? We, the people, say it is not. I ask our Honorable City Council to reverse these restrictions, which are unconstitutional, as well as morally wrong. Sir Edmund Burke said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. Please do the right thing and work to end this injustice before more lives are destroyed or lost." Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Wilson. Visit Temecula Valley. Thanks to city council and city staff for your strong decisive leadership during this unprecedented time. Your administration has been very responsive and collaborative, and for that, we are grateful. We know in the upcoming weeks, more needs to be done to get our tourism business community reopened. The tourism industry is committed to support the Riverside County Health and Safety Orders in partnership with the City of Temecula once new reopening processes are established. We encourage the City of Temecula to work in alignment with the Riverside County and communicate our support. Our industry will protect the safety of our employees, residents, and customers while being open for business. We must be open by June 1st or sooner. Our lodging industry has worked tirelessly with limited staff to support emergency and essential workers staying open at a loss to support our community. And we can say the same for our locally-owned family restaurants and wineries. All segments of Temecula travel has been impacted, not just leisure, the meetings, conventions, special events. These segments of industry delivers our critical supporters of local economies and a powerful driver of entertainment, travel, lodging, taxes, and retail revenue that is imperative to the recovery of the larger travel and tourism industry. As you all know, we have lots of work ahead. We need to open soon, as it will become harder to support and sustain our business recovery to our industry in the coming months. Thank you for your ongoing support of travel and tourism. The next speakers are Arthur and Lana Saylor. Our names are Lana and Arthur Saylor. We have been residents of Temecula for 31 years come November. We appreciate the city's ongoing response to the coronavirus pandemic, and we urge the city council to follow state and county guidelines for a gradual and safe reopening of Temecula businesses and public spaces. As California residents, we are entitled to full and equal access facilities and privileges in all business establishments and public spaces, regardless of our age, gender, race, disability, medical condition, among others. State and county health officials have determined that prevention of coronavirus transmission depends on citizens keeping a social distance of six feet, refraining from group gatherings and activities involving bodily contact or close proximity, and the wearing of face coverings in public. If some individuals are allowed to violate those directives, those of us who wish to avoid contracting COVID-19 will be unable to do so, and will thereby be denied equal access to business establishments and public spaces. We also will incur additional health risks due to increased virus transmission due to the unsafe practices in our community. The next speaker is Eric Sammons. This is Eric Sammons, a longtime resident of Temecula with my family of four. I wanted to give my input for the upcoming city council meeting in relation to the ongoing COVID situation. I wanted to send a quick note to relay my absolute opposition to any lengthening or delaying the reopening of Temecula any longer. I think we were all on board with the immediate lockdown orders, as we were face-to-face with the virus that we had no history of, and were told by the experts that our hospitals would soon be overrun, and we would find ourselves in third-world conditions. But over the last 30 to 45 days, we have learned the death rate of COVID-19 turns out to be no different than the seasonal flu. Multiple national and international studies have confirmed this. When we first were placed on lockdown, we were told all we needed to do was bend the curve. But after the 30 days, the curve has been bent, and now our elected leaders are putting up new goals and new hurdles to get our constitutionality guaranteed rights back to us. Temecula is better than this. Our companies are smart enough to practice social distancing, space seating apart, et cetera, and the city can work with those that are having trouble complying. But to continue this lockdown flies in the face of the heritage, history, and spirit of Temecula. Thank you for your consideration. The next speaker is Kathleen Bowen. I hope that the discussion regarding Temecula Services reopening will take the community's needs into consideration, especially those of children. Temecula has historically provided teen center and facilities for kids to have a safe, air-conditioned place to go. Temecula has also provided a summer day camp that provides a safe and healthy environment for kids, especially when parents are working. This option helps minimize children being left home alone. These should be considered essential services. Summer camp is a childcare service that supports parents who need to go to work. Thank you for your time and consideration in these matters. The next speaker is Tammy Sims. My name is Tammy Sims. I have been a resident of Temecula for over 32 years. I am writing this letter concerning the reopening of our city. I appreciate the city's ongoing response to the coronavirus pandemic, and I urge our city council to follow state and county guidelines for a gradual and safe reopening of businesses and public spaces. California, with the guidance of Governor Newsom, has shown overall lower cases per population than most other states. However, Riverside County continues to be only second to Los Angeles County with the highest number of cases statewide. This should be a huge concern and should be noted before ever considering any steps to reopen Temecula. As a California resident, I am entitled to full and equal access facilities and privileges in all business establishments and public spaces, regardless of my age, gender, race, disability, medical condition, among others. State and county health officials have determined that prevention of coronavirus transmission depends on strict stay-at-home orders, along with citizens keeping a social distance of six feet, refraining from group gatherings and activities, and wearing face coverings in public. If some individuals are allowed to violate these directives, those of us who wish to avoid contracting COVID-19 will be unable to do so, and will thereby be denied equal access to business establishments and public spaces. Our most vulnerable citizens will be at high risk. Please be sure to continue these strict measures to ensure the safety of all of our residents. The next speaker is Elaine Ramos Garcia. I appreciate the city's ongoing response to the coronavirus pandemic, and I urge this council to follow state and county guidelines for a gradual and safe reopening of Temecula businesses and public spaces. As a California resident, I am entitled to full and equal access facilities and privileges in all business establishments and public spaces, regardless of my age, gender, race, disability, medical condition, among others. State and county health officials have determined that prevention of coronavirus transmission depends on citizens keeping a social distance of six feet, refraining from group gatherings and activities involving bodily contact or close proximity, and wearing face coverings in public. If some individuals are allowed to violate these directives, those of us who wish to avoid contracting COVID-19 will be unable to do so, and will thereby be denied equal access to business establishments and public spaces. We also will incur additional health risks due to increased virus transmission due to unsafe practices in our community. The next speaker is Al Warren. Please keep Temecula closed until the health officials and governor have a plan in place to keep us, the survivors of this pandemic, safe and healthy. I've personally lost two very close family members to this horrific outbreak. The next speaker is Maurice Hermeyer. Please include nail salons, beauty salons, barber shops during discussions regarding the first phase of reopening Temecula. These establishments are able to easily comply with the state mandates as far as social distancing and sanitation. These are usually small businesses that supply much-needed services to a majority of Temecula citizens, even considered by some to be essential services. Thank you. The next comment is by TJ Salinas. With consideration to parks, fields, courts, et cetera, Temecula has such a large youth sports community, and while we are all anxious to get back to normal, what is the likelihood and/or timeline that fields, courts, parks, et cetera, are open for full use for individuals' teams to get back, i.e. practice, scrimmages, et cetera? Thank you for your time and consideration. The next speaker is Kyla Murphy. I live at Harveston, and I am concerned about the lack of social distancing at Harveston Lake path. I appreciate the city's response to COVID-19 and do not want the city to open Temecula businesses, parks, and public spaces too soon. I have health concerns for myself and many of my neighbors. I know that I am entitled to equal access to public facilities, but we cannot access Harveston Lake paths safely until social distancing measures are observed. With Friends of Harveston Lake, I supported two previous letters asking for temporary closures, and I still believe closure is needed until the risk of contracting COVID-19 has diminished according to state authorities. The next speaker is Cynthia Zofiat. My concerns about opening the City of Temecula Parks, Recreations, and Businesses are very concerning for my family and I because of the fact that many residents from Temecula and Marietta are not following federal guidelines. For example, I have witnessed many occasions when I go to the grocery stores, people are not covering their mouths with masks. I am a resident of Marietta, and my house is in front of one of the Marietta parks, and approximately 95% of the people that walk around the neighborhood don't wear masks. In fact, sometimes they congregate at the park, acting like nothing is happening around the world. As you know, and one thing that I don't need to ask, just collect data, how many deadly accidents happen in a daily basis in the City of Temecula and Marietta? You probably already know that, right? I am not agree with this idea. It is not safe for the community. People don't follow the stay-home mandatory. People don't even know that they have to wear masks outside their home. People laugh at my husband because he is disabled, and he wears a mask even if he is in the garage. Please think about what is going to happen if all the seniors are dead by next year. The next speaker is Bernadette McConnell. We should stand by this resolution, as it reaffirms the dire situation we currently stand in. It is clear as day to many of our citizens that this stay-at-home order has created an economic situation we have not seen since the Spanish Flu. This economic hardship has pushed some people of Temecula to demand a reopening of local businesses. I've seen our mayor understandably stand behind their fears. However, their certainty for our safety is based upon statistics that are kept low by our precautions, and do not recognize the deaths as anything but numbers, because they have yet to know someone who has suffered the excruciating death by COVID-19. Please do not give in to their demands until we have the tools to assure public safety. We are all affected by this. Currently, the states, cities, and counties that have reopened have reassured the public safety through public policy. When the city does decide to do... When the city does decide to, we need to stand behind employers' rights to require testing or vaccines for their employees, and stand behind businesses' rights to deny service to people not following their own policies of precaution. The city does not have to require this as a city mandate, but should allow businesses to mandate it on an individual basis. As a consumer, I should be able to have the agency to choose businesses that assure my safety, and that is not possible if their policy is not publicly accessible in the physical store at their entrance. I was recently laid off by the City of Temecula as a project employee due to COVID-19, as likely my line payroll was funded by city sales tax. I would hope that if hired on again, I alongside with my coworkers would be required to be tested for immunity from COVID-19, or required to be vaccinated, as we were for tuberculosis. If some precaution was not assured, I would not want to be hired once again, as majority of the public that I interacted with were children and seniors. The love for my job was never as important as the lives of other people. Again, please pass this resolution as it stands, and keep in mind my previous commentary, as you all considered how Temecula can move forward. Our lives depend on it. The next speaker is Scott Forrest. Good afternoon. My name is Scott Forrest. I am a resident of Temecula and a commercial real estate agent with Westmar Commercial Real Estate, based here in Temecula. I am writing this email to urge our leaders to open our local economy up to the fullest extent possible to allow business owners and property owners to hold on to their investments and assets. I believe that the residents and businesses of Temecula are responsible enough to live normal lives while adhering to reasonable guidelines and ordinances to assist in the slowing of the spread of COVID-19. I also hope that the local community and city appreciates and supports these business owners and property owners that sacrifice their financial wellbeings and close their doors. They put their community and neighbor's well-being before their own, and it cost them greatly. And sadly, there was very little assistance from the government that put these orders into effect. This is and will continue to be an incredible city and community, but let's get back to business in a responsible manner now, before it's too late. Thank you. The next speaker is Ursula Antonelli. I'm a new Harveston homeowner and a member of Friends of Harveston Lake. I appreciate the city's ongoing response to COVID-19, and I urge you to follow state and county directives for a gradual and safe reopening of Temecula businesses, parks, and public spaces. As of Monday evening, our problems continue at Lake Harveston. This risk of COVID-19 can't be mitigated by closing a parking lot at Harveston, because visitors park on the street. As people continue to pass well within six feet, often without masks, those who wish to enjoy the park safely are denied equal access to this public facility. Since protective measures were not taken when they were most needed, we urge the city to act promptly as follows. Prior to any resurgence of COVID-19 cases, 1. Place one-way signs on saw-horse barricades along the path. 2. Enforce the ban against skateboards and motorized scooters per the April 6 county order and place signs regarding this ban. 3. Illustrate social distancing. Place six-foot signs along the path and at entrances. 4. Since bicycles approach too quickly for others to move, ban bicycles or split the path into a four-foot strip for bikes and a six-foot strip for walkers. 5. For any future increase in the rate of COVID-19 transmission, we reassert our demand for temporary closure of Harveston Lake path, along with closing non-resident street parking. On a personal note, I am very new to the Temecula area, and I really enjoy Harveston. After the stay-at-home orders, Harveston was suddenly overrun with visitors, forcing us off the path for health reasons. Thank you for your attention. We await your prompt response. On another personal note, I am somewhat fortunate that I no longer live in San Francisco Bay Area. The shelter in place was put in place on March 19th, a week before it was ordered in Riverside County, and will more than likely stay in place until May 31st. Far more restrictive in the Bay Area than here. I find it very alarming that restrictions are not being followed or enforced to protect the Harveston Lake Park or the surrounding community. The next speaker is Regina Small. If schools are to be open, could you please explain how 20-plus kids in the classroom and hundreds of kids in a quad area are going to be safe, let alone the teachers? The next speaker is Richard Baltrick. The next speaker is Richard Baltrick. Please review the declaration, closing all parks. The Red Hawk Dog, Red Hawk Dog Park can be reopened with the rules of all people. Wear face mask and stay six feet apart. That is quite simple to follow and our dogs get to run. The knee, the need, the work they need. I think he's saying they need the workout just like us. They can't run on a leash. Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Jane Luhon. I am on board to open up the city of Temecula. Businesses and those who own them are hurting very badly. I'm not a business owner, so, but I always support our local businesses. Things can be done with caution. We can't protect ourselves a hundred percent from life, no matter how hard we try. Thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts. We need to get our economy going again. The next speaker is Benny Luhon. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views on how to reopen our city amid, amid the coronavirus concerns. I believe the priority must be upon the reopening of small businesses within our community. I believe that the considerable damage already done to this fundamental economic aspect of Temecula is much greater than the marginal benefit of coronavirus public health protections. It is now time to redirect ourselves. The next speaker is, it's Calvary Baptist Church without a specific name. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or non-essential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, smoke shops, novelty shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? If two hundred plus people can gather in a Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to the guidelines? We appreciate the work that you do and your consideration of our requests. The next speaker is Leslie Van Dusen. I am writing to request your consideration of churches during the reopening of our city's businesses and gathering places. I am sure that with additional precautions that churches can be opened with as much safety as we can ensure in other places such as Home Depot or Lowe's. Church for so many is a vital place that offers hope and well-being that is critical for a healthy community. The next speaker is Nicole Brookholder. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or non-essential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, smoke shops, novelty shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If two hundred plus people can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to the guidelines? Personally, I come into much closer contact with others while grocery shopping than I would seated in family groups on alternative rows in a large church building. The mental and spiritual health of our families is on the line. We have done our part, obeyed the restrictions, and helped to flatten the curve. Now it's time to allow us to slowly return to normal while remaining careful and considerate of others. We appreciate the work you do and your consideration of this request. The next speaker is Laura Stern. We would love to be able to discuss the possible reopening of Temecula Wine Country, Old Town, and its small hospitality-based businesses for the beginning of May. In wine country in particular, we are in a very low population area, low density out here in Temecula Wine Country with many wines and boutique hotels and vacation home rentals on large parcels of land. Because of our particular geography, we are able to easily offer social distancing to those coming to visit. And we would like to propose the possibility of reopening with certain parameters to at least allow us to be able to partially, if not fully operate. We have the right to work and our earn, and earn our living so that we can pay our expenses and take care of our families. Some parameters for small businesses to reopen that could satisfy the concerns of the city and county could be allowing wineries and breweries to open up to the public outdoors where they can host wine tastings spread out. Most wineries have, most wineries having plenty of acres of land to do so with tables set far enough apart to respect the appropriate social distance. Allowing wineries to have live entertainment in this outdoor space. Allowing wineries, wine restaurants to serve food to these outdoor spaces. Allowing single home residential property vacation home rentals to host couples or families. Allowing small bed and breakfast and boutique hotels to rent out their independent casitas that have independent entrances where guests do not have to come into contact with each other or property staff, which inherently allows for social distancing. Allowing small bed and breakfasts and boutique hotels to rent out maybe up to five rooms or every other room or just one room per week. Keeping the overall property to a low-density population that the country can accept. I think she meant to say county can accept. Allowing restaurants to serve food at tables that are placed at the appropriate social distance, allowing boutiques and stores to open. Allow a few customers inside at a link like they do in the grocery stores and maybe a certain number of people per square footage of the store space. Businesses conducted indoors where social distancing may not always be possible. Customers and staff can be required to wear masks as they do in grocery stores. This at least would allow some opportunity to get some financial relief and be able to honor our business debts and get our employees and contractors back to work at least part-time. I believe everyone in our area has been trustworthy to comport themselves correctly and accordingly and have done so. And therefore, I would believe we would be trustworthy to adhere to certain parameters in order to be able to be allowed to open our businesses back up to the public. Thank you for your consideration. The next speaker is Ray Faulkner. As one of the many Temecula Valley wineries, we remain very concerned about the health of both the general public and our wonderful employees. We believe the guidelines that have been set forth by the Wine Growers Association and the county are sufficient for us to resume operations, if only on a limited basis. Hopefully, and with persistence from all, we will all operate with a focus on safety first and business second. At the same time, we cannot forget the needs of our employees who desire to return to work as long as a safe environment can be maintained. We urge you to consider and recommend our ability as wineries to reopen to the public under a limited basis that you determine. The next speaker is Rick Reese. Thank you for your time and consideration. I request that you, the Temecula City Council, do all in your power to reopen our local businesses and enterprises right now. Our community is struggling and suffering due to these unprecedented pandemic-caused closures and our family, friends, and neighbors all stand to have their lives and livelihoods irrevocably harmed for the foreseeable future. In all likelihood, a great many of the businesses and enterprises we all cherish will no longer exist here in Temecula. The loss of jobs, businesses, and income also stands to significantly impact the city of Temecula for the worsening as dwindling city revenues will necessitate the cutting of the city's budget as well as the likely furloughs and or layoffs of city employees. Any attempts by the city to raise revenues through increased taxes and higher fees will only further exasperate this emergency and further financially strangle workers, residents, and businesses here in Temecula. I would also implore you all in the city council to ensure that our city has no business, financial, and or cultural ties to the People's Republic of China, the progenitor of this COVID-19 pandemic. While I feel great sympathy and heartbreak for the plight of the vast majority of the people within China, it must be recognized that the Chinese Communist Party's scoldedry, cover-up, lies, and propaganda in the aftermath of the release of this virus should make the Chinese regime an international pariah. Lastly, I ask that you all continue to stand by our, your oaths of office to uphold and defend our supreme U.S. Constitution and California Constitution by advocating for and protecting the natural rights of the people of Temecula. I have been particularly dismayed to read and learn that recently the mayor of Los Angeles implemented his Rewards for Snitches program, encouraging residents to inform on one another. Soon afterwards, Riverside County bureaucrats developed a digital app for county residents to anonymously report fellow neighbors for not observing proper social distancing or for not wearing a mask. These types of unaccountable programs and dictates are simply un-American and have no place in a free democratic republic. As a city, we can protect those most at risk from this virus, i.e. the elderly, the infirmed, and those with immune deficiency problems by sheltering these folks while providing them community resources to ensure that they have food, medicine, and assistance and care services, etc. But we all must ensure that everyone has their freedoms protected too, i.e. freedom of speech, freedom to worship, freedom to engage in commerce, freedom of association, and freedom to travel. At this rate, I fear that there will have to be another emergency declared just in response to this already declared emergency. I fear that the cure is becoming worse than the disease itself. The next speaker is Rob Park. I'm writing to see if there is a timeline to opening the city dog parks. Our dogs are restless and don't have any outlets, outlets to release their energy. I know that even prior to the closure, we were respecting the six feet apart rule and face covering. Please bring this up before the city council meeting if possible. The next speaker is Alicia Meyer. During these uncertain times, many businesses have deemed essential, have been deemed essential or non-essential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, smoke shops, novelty shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that that much and even more essential? I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If two hundred plus people gather, can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to the guidelines? We appreciate the work that you do and your consideration of our requests. The next speaker is BJ Fazelli. At Fazelli Sellers, we recognize that the continuing threat of COVID-19 means we must take a measured approach to getting prepared for reopening. In Temecula Wine Country, we are not just selling wine. We provide an experience where our customers enjoy tasting wine in the company of each other, seeing the grapes growing while enjoying the spectacular views. As we move through the next phase, we must take care not to have rules that make this enjoyment difficult or impossible. Yet we are committed to the health and safety of our customers and employees, and we recognize that measures are required to address these issues. A subcommittee of the Wine Growers Association is working on a set of protocols and procedures that wineries are to follow. Hopefully, everyone, including the County of Riverside, City of Temecula, Chamber of Commerce, Visit Temecula, and the Wine Growers Association will work together and help us move forward. The next comment is by Melinda Shaw. I'm speaking to you on behalf of all citizens and small businesses in Temecula to ask that you take a strong and forceful stand on the reopening of our city. You cannot sit by and say that your hands are tied and that the reopening of our local city is in the hands of Governor Newsom and the state of California. You have a civil duty and responsibility to the citizens of Temecula to take a proactive approach and demand that our city be allowed to establish our own policies on reopening based on the unique data relevant to Temecula. The data shows that the death rate of point zero one percent does not warrant the extreme shutdown and the destruction of our economy. Governor Newsom admits that we have flattened the curve and our hospitals are not overwhelmed with COVID-19 patients. There's no logic or reasoning in continuing the shutdown and we must do everything in our power to demand that we reopen our city and our economy. The people of Temecula will not accept the inaction of our Temecula City Council on this matter. We are expecting you to take similar measures like the city of Oceanside in demanding that Riverside County Public Health Officer Dr. Kaiser allow Temecula to create its own policies for reopening our city. The citizens of Temecula support any measures that must be taken by our city, including suing Governor Newsom, the state of California, and the Riverside County Public Health Officer Dr. Kaiser. The U.S. Attorney General William Barr issued a memorandum yesterday stating that the federal government will be pursuing any local and state governments that have overreached civil liberties such as discrimination against religious institutions and religious believers, discriminations against disfavored speech, and undue interference with the national economy. I have emailed a copy of this memorandum to all city council members. You will be held accountable for your actions or lack thereof in allowing the civil liberties of your citizens to be taken away during this shutdown. If you are not proactively seeking the reopening of our city, you will be hearing from your constituents again on this matter. The next comment is by Jamie Wrench. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or non-essential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, smoke shops, novelty shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If two hundred plus people can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to the guidelines? We appreciate the work you do and your consideration of our requests. The next speaker is Ann Mauser. I have been an original homeowner at Harveston Lake since April fourth, two thousand and five. As a very proud homeowner of our Harveston community, I value the beautiful amenities that are available. Unfortunately, our nation and world has been struck with this devastating pandemic. Thank goodness our great Governor Newsom acted very quickly to enforce strict guidelines to be followed by all residents of California, resulting in lower fatalities than parts of the, than other parts of the country. I am seventy-seven-year-old senior and have witnessed the guidelines not being followed through out Harveston, possibly resulting in sickness and death. I miss getting out as much as anyone. However, these regulations must be met in our community or we will never be safe. I urge the council to strictly enforce the social distancing as residents and non-residents are not abiding by Governor Newsom's outlines. I am wondering what is it going to take to have people listen? Please, please, I challenge you to drive around our community to see these being broken. I drive my car, I drove my car to the mailbox and counted forty-three people walking around and only two people had masks on. There were two families that were having a picnic on the front lawn by the lake house. Thank you very much for your time and look forward to hearing from you regarding this matter. The next speaker is Krista Peitch. Recovery, recovery means getting back to the normal operation of our businesses. But we recognize that the continuing threat of COVID-19 means that we must take a measured approach in getting there. The businesses of our wineries is not just selling wine. Most importantly, it is providing an experience where our customers enjoy tasting wine in the company of each other and see the grapes growing that resulted in the wine they are tasting. While we move through the next phase, we must take care not to have rules that make this enjoyment difficult or impossible. Yet we are committed to the health and safety of our customers and employees, and we recognize that measures are required to address that. To these ends, we propose that a balanced approach be taken and an approach that is reasonable and adaptable to the varying modes of operations of the wineries. Therefore, we have set out a set of protocols and procedures that wineries are to follow. Protocols in the area of physical distancing, sanitation, and safety. These protocols provide alternatives in order to recognize the physical diversity of our tasting rooms. The next speaker is Deshaun Williams. The number-one way businesses can let their community, community know they're open, what they're doing to protect their customers and guidelines they're following for this pandemic is social media marketing. The next speaker is Rick and Sherry Foss. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or non-essential. We'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, smoke shops, novelty shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? We attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If two hundred plus people can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to the guidelines? We appreciate the work you do and your consideration of our requests. The next speaker is Wendy Wrench. I attend Calvary Baptist Church of Temecula. We have been in this valley for thirty-three years and have always supported our community and government. But we hope you will let our county and state officials know that we want the opportunity to hold services again at our church. No time in our country's history have we ever closed all the doors of our churches at one time. And I wonder what the effects this will have in the future. We understand the seriousness of the virus but are willing to go by re-entry guidelines. We are and have been praying for you, our elected leaders. The next speaker is Ronald Zimmer. My family moved here in December of two thousand and two. We wanted the rural atmosphere and less traffic congestion. I'll go ahead and, and continue with this comment, but it seems like it's it actually has to do with the Inez, possibly the Inez widening. It references that as well. I'll go ahead and, and read it for the record. My family moved here in December of two thousand and two. We wanted the rural atmosphere and less traffic and congestion, moving from the crowded Orange County area and living in your Belinda. Having horse property there and moving here with our horses and other animals was great. Now eighteen years later, we are seeing Orange County all over again, except on steroids. The expansion in Temecula is concerning on the basis of water shortages, utilities, and infrastructure. My real concern is that, does it ever stop with the population doubling almost the last eighteen years? Traffic now on the fifteen is beyond whatever I imagined here in Temecula area. Now more expansion of your Temecula roadways classifications. What I find is interesting about your Inez expansion now is from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen, the area that is being widened, it has seen four thousand the area that is being widened, it has seen 4,613 less cars a day average in a three-year period, which might mean people have found alternative routes. These numbers are found on the City of Temecula average daily traffic volumes ADT. Like the 15 freeway, just a matter of time before Inez is overwhelmed with traffic congestion. But by you allowing an increase in traffic flow, this will give you better numbers for the ADT. This then will give you further data so you can continue to widen streets to allow even more flow. I guess the real question for you all is, what is the end game? How many more apartments, homes, businesses, expansions in Old Town and throughout Temecula? What is the total goal for your population to be in the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years? When will it be enough for this community? Water availability, sewage, all of the utilities that will be needed. All of our water is used for agriculture, wineries, and avocado-growing Rancho water. The next comment is by Candy Zimmer. We moved to Temecula from Yorba Linda. Actually, this is another on the Inez. I'm gonna go ahead and read it just so that we have it on the record. We moved to Temecula from Yorba Linda in 2002. We moved here because of the beautiful rural country atmosphere. Highway 79 was a two-lane road. There was minimal traffic. People were riding horses on 79 South Temecula Parkway and in downtown Temecula. I understand that with the growth of the city, this is no longer possible, but we still should be able to ride in our own rural neighborhoods. I am concerned with the increased number of cars cutting through our beautiful neighborhood. People use social media apps to ease their commute home because traffic improvements like the Western Bypass and 15215 Project have not proceeded in a timely basis. So many people traveling through here during heavy traffic have nothing to do with our town or our community. They do not obey the speed limits with this. It is no longer safe to ride a horse or walk the trail system because traffic control measures are not in place to allow safe crossings. Imagine having four lanes to traverse. I must get off my horse to stop traffic to cross at the designated horse crossings. This plan does nothing to erase the current bottleneck on the Inez corridor, which is not being improved. The area from Santiago to the Rancho Cal-duck Pond, this is the actual area causing backups. Four lanes will only allow for more volume of cars using the corridor. It will not increase safety or decrease time to traverse the corridor. It will only result in more cars using local streets instead of the 79 South Temecula Parkway. To conclude, I oppose the widening of Inez, La Paz, and Duportola roads through our community, and will just make the current situation worse. Please help council members. You're our only hope in protecting the quality of life in Temecula. Okay, the next comment is from Al Rubio and Emily Filippino from the Chamber. On behalf of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, we would like to share some perspective on our city's recovery. The perspective we share tonight is shaped by the real stories and experiences of our local business owners and by the individuals who use the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce as a resource, support, and ally through this trying time. We hope you will hear our comments and requests as pleased from and our collective community. We recognize that there is reason and rationale for the quarantine orders we have followed. We respect the interest of public health, and we conduct ourselves and our actions with civic pride, social responsibility, and consideration of the community's best interest. Our good faith efforts have been placed well. But today, as we find ourselves in Week 6 and counting of an economic shutdown, we implore you to actively pursue an expedient reopening of our local economy. All things considered, we have the following comments for your consideration on the topic of recovery. Please consider that our economy is made up of a myriad of industries, all of them equally dependent on the opportunity to open. Please consider giving all businesses the opportunity to reopen by May 15 with proper guidance, restrictions, and direction. We invite you to use TVCC, the Chamber, as a partner to create guidelines for every business segment so they can reopen. Resource guides should include practical examples for how to minimize germ spread, how to embrace hygiene and sanitation practices, and how to manage physical distancing. We recognize reopening is not a one-size-fits-all plan, but the basis of public health concern, hygiene, and sanitation and social distancing are universal and can be tailored to every business environment. In the spirit of collaboration, we encourage the Temecula City Council to request that the county's Department of Public Health and the county board of supervisors evaluate our city's ability to reopen on our own merits, which include our local healthcare resources, our ability to test, and our ability to responsibly preserve public health by restricting how businesses operate through this time. Please implore our county officials to share their plans with city and business leaders proactively ahead of public announcement so that we can approach recovery with a shared focus, understanding, and organization. As you know, our restaurants, wineries, and breweries have suffered tremendous losses during this pandemic. We ask you to lobby for their ability to reopen sooner than later. These industries cannot be first to close and last to open. This is unnecessary and detrimental. We need the council to advocate for all of our businesses and our community. Please use your influence to help establish successful guidelines and policies that will be placed on businesses in the future. We'd like to refer the council to the Chamber. Visit Temecula Valley and the Temecula Valley Wine Growers Association as leading partners to outline the return-to-work guidelines for our city. In summary, please know that every business in our city matters and that they are all struggling for life. They need opportunity through a reopening effort. The SBA loans are not a solution, and frankly, they're not accessible enough. Together, we can shape a responsible reopening of our local businesses. We can assist every business segment with guidelines appropriate for their industry. Temecula's community health metrics argue that our risk factors are low. Our hospital supply, testing capacity, COVID case count, and medical resources are stronger than many others. Our risk can be offset by responsible management and local governance. We appreciate your time and the opportunity to share our requests.
Mr. Mayor, before the next comment is read, we're approaching 10 o'clock.
Oh, yes.
I move that we extend the meeting till 11:00 p.m.
All right, so moved.
The next comment is from Bill Wilson. My name is Bill Wilson, and my family owns and operates Wilson Creek Winery. Thank you for listening to all of us. I'm sure you have heard quite a bit, so I will not try to bore you or play politics with you. So here it is. Sunday, March 15 was my version of 9/11 when the Twin Towers came crashing down. On March 15 at 2:04 p.m., I watched in horror as Governor Gavin Newsom proclaimed that all wineries were to be shut down immediately. I knew the devastating toll this would take on our business, our employees, our guests, and the many supporting businesses that supply wine country with essential goods and services. On the following Monday, March 16, I was forced to furlough 173 employees. It was the worst feeling in the world. My shoulders were heavy and I was sick to my stomach. But we did what we had to do in order to flatten the curve and not overwhelm the healthcare system. We were all happy to do our part to win the war on the coronavirus, and it worked. It actually worked so well that there was no real spike in Riverside County, and to date, there have been only 114 deaths. Don't get me wrong, 114 deaths is sad. But if those goes on any longer, the mental health of a shutdown society will be much worse. We are all told this stay-at-home order was to last 15 days. That has now turned into six weeks and counting. It is time to slowly turn on the socket of business. I'm not advocating for the large crowds we used to get on the weekends, but I am advocating for proper spatial distancing, not social distancing. We have a very large property that can safely accommodate a limited number of guests to enjoy a glass of wine, have a delicious farm-to-table meal, and enjoy the social company of their family and close friends. One size does not fit all. Wilson Creek Winery can safely spread people throughout our entire property. Our employee's safety and our guest's safety is of utmost concern, and we will all wear the proper PPE and do the proper sanitation to kill the virus. I don't want to get sick any more than anybody else, and unfortunately, you will not see Rosie and Jerry down having lunch and entertaining the guests, something they would love to do so much. Unfortunately, they will still be in lockdown. If Walmart, Costco, and Albertsons or other essential businesses can operate safely, then we should be able to operate safely. I call it the new norm. Come on, Temecula. We did our part to flatten the curve. Now, please do your part and don't flatten the economy. The next comment is from William Wrench. I'm requesting to be including comments regarding Agenda Item Number 17 regarding reopening. And among many, including many of our own city leaders and public servants, who believe churches ought to be among those entities considered essential. I've been seeing hundreds coming and going to stores and places like Lowe's, and I believe they should, but the need for people to attend their places of worship ought to be addressed as well. It is not possible for any person or agency or government to guarantee safety to everyone everywhere, no matter how long we keep people shut in and isolated. Common sense needs to be restored. We want to get back to church. Thank you all for your service for our city. The next comment is from Carrie Wrench. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or nonessential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, Smoke Shops, Novelty Shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If 200-plus people can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to guidelines? We appreciate the work you do and consideration of our requests. The next comment is from Laura Soli. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or nonessential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, Smoke Shops, Novelty Shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If 200-plus people can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to the guidelines? We appreciate the work you do and your consideration of our requests. Next comment is by Matthew Rowley. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or nonessential. As I was talking to my wife, it occurred to me that if we wanted to have a church service, we could all just meet at Walmart or Home Depot. Now, of course, I said this in jest, but it points out an underlying issue that we, as a general public, can be trusted to walk about a box store in which the spacing is not forced. Why could we not just do the same in a house of worship? There is an unequal application of rules that benefit some and unfairly restrict others. This is not the scientific approach, as has been touted by our governmental leadership. This is arbitrary. It lends itself to seem as if the places open are the ones that benefit government by way of tax revenue. I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula, and if hundreds can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather together and be trusted in the same way as those other establishments are by respectfully adhering to the guidelines? We appreciate the work you do and your consideration of our requests. The next speaker is Erica Vaillée. Good evening. My name is Erica Vaillée. I have lived in Temecula for the past 12 years and have served the community as a hairstylist for the past eight. I currently live in Harveston and observe every day the misuse of masks and lack of proper social distancing. I believe that part of this problem is the lack of education for the proper use of personal protective equipment. Unfortunately, if the members of our city are not properly educated on the issue of masks, the masks become less beneficial for preventing the spread of the virus. Will the city put together an education plan to help prevent the spread of the virus after opening? Temecula has a large community of independent hairstylists or booth renters. As a booth renter, I do not have a superior to enforce that proper safety measures are used while I transition back to work. The owner of the salon that I rent from currently has no plans to take any extra precautions after reopening the salon. Since booth rental, booth rent hairstylists are in such close contact with clients, have no superior to enforce rules, and no education on PPE, how will the city measure that salons do not become a hotspot for the virus? Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Daniels. As a single mother of three, I have grave concerns about the city reopening too soon. I know there is pressure to allow businesses to reopen and for things to get back to normal, but we should not do this prematurely. This is hard, but we've come too far now to stray from solid guidelines set forth by health officials. The health and well-being of people, the citizens of Temecula, should far outweigh the pressure to open back up. Next speaker is Courtney Sheehan. Recently, Huntington Beach opened their beaches, and Orange County Superiors just approved a plan to reopen businesses in Orange County. I think she meant supervisors. Orange County Supervisors just approved a plan to reopen businesses in Orange County. I would advise the council to spend two weeks watching our sister county to the east as they open business and to assess implications of this decision in real time so that we can view the OC as a case study for our own movement forward. We can learn from their actions and open our city in a more informed way after we see what happens across county lines. Please push our county supervisors to help make our public services as accessible as possible during this time and take the next two weeks to watch and assess before making a decision. Thank you. The next speaker is Ed Duel. As a 30-year resident businessman and developer in Temecula, the city that we all love, we have went through fires, earthquakes, snow, real estate downturns, the 2003 flood, and we came out on top. Now, we have the coronavirus. This reopening of our city is the most important moment in our city's history. As a citizen and taxpayer of the city of Temecula, request to know what the city has in funds, money in the general funds, reserve accounts, investment, and holding accounts. The numbers show the city is a sales tax producer, so let's give some back to our businesses. The city could help kickstart our small businesses by looking at our reserves and knowing that we have them for this type of an emergency. As Councilman Carl Lindeman's always stated, "Show me the money." The city of Temecula loaned me and others $100,000 in a loan program that kickstarted Old Town back in 2003. I paid mine back early, and like others, we got Old Town started. The small businesses in Temecula need help now. Let's put a program together. If this should be within Item Number 17, it's okay. The next speaker is Bud Duke. During these uncertain times, many businesses have been deemed essential or nonessential. I'd like to propose that if businesses like Home Depot, Smoke Shops, Novelty Shops, and many more are deemed essential, aren't churches that much and even more essential? I attend Calvary Baptist Church in Temecula. If 200-plus people can gather in Walmart, Costco, or other stores, isn't it possible for us as a church to gather with respect to guidelines? We appreciate the work that you do and your consideration of this request. Mr. Mayor, I am actually getting ready to read the last comment, and after that, if we can take a brief recess, that would be fabulous. The final comment is from David Van Lees. Open now. Orange County voted 5-0 to open now.
Okay.
Mayor, that concludes the public comments.
Can I say, let's take a five-minute break to do what we need to do and then come back and discuss this very hot topic. All right, thank you.
I'm here, but I'm trying to start my video.
Got it. All right. It appears that all five of you are back, and city attorney, city manager are also back, so if you would like to proceed.
All right, so let's get started with council comments. So who would like to start off their ideas for... Well, let's go back to the park system. Let's get that one out of the way first. So, Councilman Ron, we haven't heard from you as far as the parks are concerned.
Thanks, Stu. So, you know, look, a month ago, when we were having this council meeting, we were having a very dire conversation. We were talking about potential circumstances where we don't have enough beds in hospitals, right? We're looking at contingency plans for how to support a population that might become severely infected. And we were watching what was happening in Italy, New York, and other communities that were hard-hit, crossing our fingers that we wouldn't be there. So, I'm thrilled that we are not having those conversations today. But I have to be real candid here, somewhat disappointed that we're having the conversations about parking lots that we are. You know, it's nice to have that luxury, but we need to recognize, I think, the importance of what it is we are doing collectively as a city, as a county, as a state, as a nation. as a city, as a county, as a state, as a nation, you know, as a, as a globe. This is, this is a, a big effort. And we need to be able to do all of this, you know, in tandem with one another, recognizing that what one community does affects the others. What one store does affects everyone else, right? And so, you know, look, I'd love to see everybody get back to normal. I'd love to see us be able to reopen things and, and, you know, all of that. I think our focus needs to be on economic recovery and we'll talk about that here in a moment. But as far as I'm concerned, the, the parking lots need to stay the way they are. You know, I think the, the city staff are in no position, I mean, look, look, let's be honest. You know, we, we have, and I've mentioned this at several of our prior council meetings, we create ordinances and regulations, whether it's parking lots because of our schools and issues that we had last year or whether it's short-term vacation rentals or whatever it is. We're creating those laws, those policies, those regulations, those ordinances because of the least common denominator of folks who do the wrong thing, not because of the folks who are doing the right thing, right? And so what did we see? We saw beaches reopen. We saw, you know, other communities start to, to do what they needed to do. And I drive around the city, curious what's happening as, you know, businesses and things start to change and we open our, reopen our golf courses, for instance. And I see a group of, of four people standing right next to each other, no masks on, patting each other on the back and giving them high fives. I'm guessing they're not all in the same family. And I'm guessing that they're not all, you know, following the policies that were set into place. I drive by our tennis courts and our pickleball courts and I see the same thing. And so we're going to ask our staff to what, go out and, and regulate, you know, a population of people who are, are, you know, not following the rules? And then at the same time, what, putting themselves at risk for that? I just, you know, I, I just can't, I can't see us making that kind of decision. I think we, you know, we can start to phase this in appropriately. I think there's an opportunity for us to begin to reopen. And, you know, in, you know, and Kevin, you know, maybe you can chime in on this as well. There are some parks that are probably more appropriate for opening parking lots than others. And again, it's sort of a phasing approach. But my biggest concern is the minute you open up one, you know, parking lot at one park, it's going to be filled immediately. And then you're going to have folks, you know, interacting in a way that, that they shouldn't because people just simply aren't. I mean, we've heard over and over, and I know every single one of you on the council has seen at least one incident and probably many where folks are not, you know, following these orders. So, you know, I, I just, I can't, as, as a council member, say, let's just, you know, start to reopen everything in the parks and open all these parking lots and put other folks at risk. I have to say, I was also extremely disappointed with, with some of the comments and things that were said where, you know, if you're sick or if you're worried about this, stay home. I mean, so it's okay to infringe on those people's rights, but, but not yours? You know, I mean, this, we are all struggling with what is happening in this pandemic today. And we have to make very difficult decisions. But I, I do not want to put our city staff at risk. I do not want to have, and, and we've made it abundantly clear the role that law enforcement plays in all of this. And if there are any questions, you can find all of that information on the city's website and the sheriff's department's website and everything else. We've, we have done, I think, a stellar job of keeping, you know, our community safe to this point, given all the limitations and issues that we are seeing out there and trying to make sure that, you know, that Temecula is the, the safe community it needs to be. And as far as the parking lots are concerned, I just, you know, I, I, I would much rather spend our time talking about economic recovery in the community and, you know, how to coordinate with our local businesses and the chamber and, you know, our partners with the other cities and the tribes and, and the county and state and so forth. I would much rather spend our time talking about that. So that's all I have.
Right. Mayor Pro Temadouis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was particularly interested, I didn't keep track, but it seemed like the comments were about 50/50 for and against. I can certainly say that everyone is in favor of staying safe. I think people just have different degrees of what that means. What might be safe, it might seem safe to me, might not seem safe to someone else, so. Bottom line right now is we are bound by law and Peter made it very clear that we need to observe the laws of the state, which they then pass down to the county because they give the county a little bit of leeway. But the county can only do, the county can, county can only increase the stringent requirements. The county cannot diminish the requirements. In other words, the county, I believe, cannot allow things that the state continues to prohibit. And Temecula is in the same boat. We cannot allow things for our city that the state prohibits. And I don't really think when it, which comes to show that that's a direction that we'd want to go and spend resources that the city won't have because of the damage that we've taken during the first quarter with no, or the third quarter, depending on how you look at the fiscal year, with, with no revenue. My main concern, other than safety, and that's a given, is the impact that this is having on our businesses. Because our businesses are really, through sales taxes, how we really float Temecula's boat. And, and even with Measure S, half of the money generated through that one cent sales tax comes from tourists. So tourists are act, actually picking up half of Temecula's bills when it comes to that sales tax revenue. We're benefiting by tourism, paying for a lot of our, our things, so. I'm concerned there, I'm concerned for businesses and I'm concerned for families. But I can tell you that having, you know, working for the school district, I have seen families rally through this. And it's not been easy for parents to stay home with kids when kids are usually in school. And add to that the fact that parents have the option of becoming teachers. And a lot of parents are doing that. They're getting assignments from their students, real teachers, and they have the option of, of doing those activities and doing that work. Students won't be penalized if they don't do online school, but, you know, they can increase their grade.
Mary Ann, so, so what about the parks? This is where, the first discussion is about the parks. What, what is your opinion on opening parking lots for parks?
Well, I heard Aaron say that, that, you know, there's no prohibition for parking on the street right now and it encourages local people to use local parks or the parks closest to their homes. And I have no, I have no objection to that. I don't know that by opening the parking lots, we're going to make certain parks destinations. And I think that's probably the, the biggest hurdle. Because everybody wants to go to the splash pad or they want to go to the sports park or things like that. So by opening the parking lots, we're encouraging people to drive across town because we have a place to park. It would be great if we could open up everything. I mean, but we just can't at this point. So I still want to err on the side of caution. If you want to walk to the park, maintain your distance, then go ahead and do so. And it's not that the parks are closed, the parking lots are closed. So the people who say, "Open up the parks," I hope they must have a park, their pocket park within their tract or their development, or they're close enough that they can walk to one of the city parks. So I'd rather see that than, than, you know, open up the parking lots right now. Let's err on the side of caution and protect those who are, who are going to put themselves at risk. Let's protect everyone.
Okay. I got a question for Kevin. Are there any parking lots or parks that have parking lots that would not be destination parking, destination parks? You know, I, I, the whole dog park thing comes to mind, you know? That, that definitely is more of a unique use for, you know? So I, I, I'm kind of leaning towards maybe allowing such, like a dog park, but not like a bird's call or a Ronald Reagan or something that, that's really huge with huge parking lot with. So what's, what's, what say you?
No, I, I agree with that and I appreciate the comments and, excuse me, for you bringing that up. It's interesting because we've been internally having discussions about the dog parks, to be quite honest. And, and so we actually would be.
We're a supporter right here for the dog parks.
Yeah. So let's take Red Hawk, for example, where we know that dogs, like humans, need recreation. And so we get that. And so that should be something that we explore and, and we have, and, and we're looking at opening that up too. But keep in mind though, that we only have two dog parks and Red Hawk is kind of the premier one. And so using that as an example, it will become a destination point if you open that up or open the parking lot. It will become a destination point. Back to your point about the other parks though, and, and I appreciate Councilman Rod's comments regarding it too. You know, prior to closing the parking lots, I think it was around April 6th or something like that, we weren't seeing a lot of social distancing. Our Rangers were reporting and it was frustrating. You know, the Rangers, they're not in this enforcement mode. They're more ambassadors. That's their role and they're kind of these visual reminders of the do's and don'ts of using the park spaces responsibly. They have reported that since we've closed some of the parking lots, that we've seen greater social distancing. You can also tell by some of the comments that were read that, yes, Mary Ann, you're correct. There was kind of half that were, you know, supportive of, of our actions and half that weren't. And maybe that's a definition of compromise where, you know, we've taken a balanced approach, where we're just, we're trying to strike a balance and, and I, I think the Rangers are doing a good job. Again, just trying to be responsible out there in the field. But, you know, all agencies are struggling with this right now. But if you're asking staff, our preference would be to continue along the path of what we're doing and keeping the parking structures closed. Anecdotally, for example, we know that we recently opened up Marguerite and Paula for, you know, based upon the most recent order to allow tennis and pickleball. And so we understood that that was going to bring a, a new group and, you know, a lot of pent-up demand. But what we're seeing is with the opening of these parks and the parking structures there too, that there's spillage. The patrons aren't just using pickleball and tennis. They are actually going over to close amenities such as playgrounds. And so it, it would follow that it's very difficult to maintain the social distancing if we allow just a mass opening. We definitely, Bird's Call was brought up as well as Ronald Reagan. We would not recommend at this point of phasing that in and keep, and, and opening those parking structures. Ironically, we've been talking to our, our peers and colleagues, you know, throughout the region. And, you know, and they've been watching what Temecula's doing, to be quite honest. I'm so thankful that the council made a decision to keep our parks open. Aaron was supportive and I know the council was too. It was, you know, our closures, if you will, our soft closures were just for the parking lots. But other agencies saw that we were keeping our, our parks open for recreation use and because they're essential and important in that capacity. And a lot of follows suit. Riverside County though, their parks, for example, they've opened up some of their parking lots, but they definitely have closed and kept closed their, their larger destination parks for, out of the same concern that we brought up, that it would attract gatherings and social gatherings and beyond their scope of being able to, you know, enforce and, and, and handle. So there's a mixed approach, but to answer your question, you know, at this point, it's possible. We wouldn't recommend phasing all parks being reopened.
Alright. Any other comments out there? Yes, Mike?
Well, I, I'm really having some trouble with what I'm hearing, to be honest with you. If you play tennis or pickleball, you get to use the park and parking lot. If you don't, you're disenfranchised. If you have a park that's in quote-unquote walking distance, you can go to the park. But if you don't, you can't go to the park.
City council meeting still going on, talking about reopening Temecula.
I'm sorry, can we please, we please mute?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor.
The, the, I mean, I'm wondering how disabled people get to the park? What do they just not be able to drive there? I mean, to have the streets open and not the parking lots is an oxymoron. We're not social engineers. I trust my residents to practice the social distancing. Are there knuckleheads that won't do it? Yes. But the preponderance of people will practice social distancing. And if we saw anything, we've seen that in Temecula. We've seen it at Walmart. We've seen it at the markets. We've seen it at Home Depot. Now if I pull up to a park and I park there and I see a bunch of knuckleheads or I see that it's not safe, I will not go there. But that decision is mine, not this city council's. Now, the health official for the county of Riverside has lifted those restrictions. None of us on this call is a doctor. None of us knows how to regulate this. Yet we're taking a position like, "I want to be cautious. I want to be careful." Well, give me some criteria that moves you. Give me some criteria that says, "Well, what's going to happen that'll make you feel better to let people park?" It's not our position to do that. We've got the go-ahead. Now, I'm a firm believer, we pay a tax, Measure C, to maintain those parks. We do not have a staffing problem. There is a health need to use these parks. If we did have a staffing problem, we have the reserves to open up the parks and staff it. And I think it's just as important as the businesses. Please keep in mind, we're asking people to stay in their homes. And unless you can walk to a park, you're disenfranchised. But at the same time, if you can drive there and park at the street, you're okay. It, it doesn't compute for me. Let's see. I also think that if you open up the parks and let them park, you will not have the inundation for the very reason that you'd be spreading out the use. And I'll tell you something else. If I want to go to Harveston Lake and walk it, who can tell me I can't go? And I have to be forced on the, to park on the street in front of somebody's house because we've made an official city decision that the parking lots closed, so I cannot go? As I said, and I don't want to be redundant, if I pull up at Harveston Lake Park, which the city maintains, and I feel it's not safe, I will not go. But that decision is mine and that decision belongs to every single resident. That's all I have to say on the topic. I don't, I don't want to be redundant, but I, I just don't see any premise whatsoever. None. Staffing, health, anything to keep parking lots closed. But by all means, if you play tennis or pickleball, have at it. Go park. That just doesn't, that just does not resonate with me. None whatsoever. Open the parking lots. And that's, I, I'm ready to discuss business, but what's the whole this parking lot issue?
Right. So what do you, Zach, do you have anything else you want to add?
Zach, can you please unmute?
I'm so sorry. That's my first mistake. So I, I think the thing that I want to say is the parking lot issue is to, is the, is to stop the, the congregation of large groups. And it isn't a matter of, do we think it's going to happen? We've, we've had this discussion. We know it's going to happen. It's happened in the past and, and it'll continue to happen. And I understand where you're coming from, Mike, but, you know, we do have a responsibility to maintain that public health. And if we can do something like this, where we can say, "Hey, look, you, you can't park here" and that stops the congregation, then, then I feel like that's a good position to be in. And I shared with you last week, you know, with respect to pickleball and, and tennis, Margarita Community Park is a community park that is serviced the entire community, but it also serves as a pocket park for the residents that can walk to that. And, and like I said last week, you, you, you've created a situation, and I don't mean you personally. And i- and like I said last week, you you you've created a situation, and I don't mean you personally, I think we've created a situation where. Now that park, you're getting spillover into the playground equipment and the and the folks that live there, that live in apartments that. Their part, their parks internally have been closed and shut down, so they have zero space to to. Recreate in any meaningful way, and it was sort of now we've taken that away and so I had concerns with that, so. You know, I I feel like if if anything, we we look at, you know, what happens over the next week or so and we've sort of phased some things in. And and I think settling there, I think is a good spot to be in, we can monitor things, we can look and and we can work through Kevin and his staff and say, okay, well, realistically. If we open, let's say, Pabba Ridge Park or if we open Butterfield Stage Park, those sort of peripheral parks that have parking lots that serve a part of the community. Um, is that, is that an option to do that? Um, the 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 thing that I think we still need to be mindful of is the staff and their health. And are they able to manage, if we open Ronald Reagan, if we open Bird's Saw, are we putting staff in a position that they're not prepared for? Uh, large gatherings and and things that they can't control. Um, that's just, that's where I'm at with it.
Well, I I have a question.
Yeah.
What is staff doing at Pabba Ridge Park or Butterfield Park? There's no function for staff there. What would they be doing?
No, I don't, I don't necessarily mean that, I think uh, my comments to staff are, were the larger parks, if we open Ronald Reagan, where there's. Very um, nice amenities at Ronald Reagan, uh, the pump track is, would be inundated immediately. And then you're going to get spillover into the playground and you you have a line and you say, okay, you know, how do you manage that and how do you safely manage that? Um, so I'm, I'm going to be cautious, honestly, we've, we've, we've dealt with this for the last six weeks and if we're cautious for another one or two weeks, I can live with that. That's where I'm at.
So give me the criteria, staff and council, under which we are going to main ca- maintain cautiousness. And um, phase it in, what is our threshold, what is our measuring point? What are 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 feeling, are whim, uh, somebody gives us more permission, what is, what is our threshold?
Go ahead, Matt.
I don't think we're in a position to make that decision here tonight. Um, I mean, we could, we could come up with a number, we could be arbitrary about it. Um, you know, we could, you know, make wild guesses, that's not our function. You know, I was under the impression that these, this particular agenda item, like I said. Was an opportunity for us to talk about how do we reopen Temecula, not simply just create, you know, arbitrary thresholds. The one thing that I'll speak to in a moment, uh, regarding, you know, sort of the economic recovery and the reopening of businesses. Is we want exactly that, we want those thresholds. Um, you know, at what point, what is the trigger that we are waiting to see with the county or the state? That allows us to start to reopen businesses, in what sort of manner and how do we phase those open appropriately? I think, you know, it, I mean, imagine, you know, reopening all these parks, but keeping everybody home and, you know, uh, you know, not reopening our businesses. We're, we're creating our our own problems here, yes, we want people to be, you know, outside, yes, we want them to be healthy, yes, we want their mental health. Uh, you know, and uh, you know, and and activity to, you know, find that sort of balance that everybody's trying to seek right now. Um, but you know, but but I think it's uh, it's, it's, you know, not for this council to sit here tonight. And say, you know, at this number, at this time, at this whatever, in exactly 1.7 weeks, we will be, yeah, I I mean, that's not the point. The point is, we need to be reaching out to the county. And I'll be candid here, is that frankly, the county's decision making, as far as I can tell, has been fairly arbitrary as well. Why, why tennis courts, why golf courses, why uh, pickleball court, courts, what what was the logic behind any of that? You know, you want a threshold and you want a a number from us, I want the same thing from the county. There was no clear guidance given whatsoever, as far as I can tell, aside from political pressure in the desert to reopen golf courses for economic reasons. You know, if that's how we're going to make decisions and we're going to let policy and politics guide, you know, this. Uh, uh, you know, reopening of our city, uh, then we've, you know, gone really far off the track. I would rather, again, have us talk about what are those thresholds, you're absolutely right, Mike, I agree with you 100%. What are those numbers? Why did the county make certain decisions that they did? And, you know, let's base our decision making not on a whim, but on real information and real thresholds where we feel that it's comfortable. You know, why, and and I agree with you 100% Mike, why a pickleball court and not a pump track? You know, I mean, it it just, there was no logic in what was done and it was disappointing to see that roll out. And we have said this on many occasions here at these council meetings. Where we get decisions and edicts and we just had to deal with two of them earlier in this uh, in this meeting. Uh, regarding, you know, housing and so forth and density, right? Uh, we get an edict from the state of California that says, you shall do this and everybody on the council says begrudgingly. I guess we have to do this, right, because that is the edict placed down. We would like more information, we would like, you know, some guidance from the county on how to reopen. And that's what we need to start talking about with the county and provide them with our perspective as a city, this is what would work for our city. Every city is going to be different, we have a lot of parks, we have a lot of amenities, we have a lot of things that we need to reopen. Um, but let's do it logically and let's do it in good communication with the county. Not a one-way communication from them where we get this random, you know, hour by hour change based on whatever whim the county is experiencing with no data to back up their decision making.
So here's my opinion, I, you know, since we've gotten this little bit of flexibility, I hate not to use it. And so I would love to see or hear or even have um, Kevin uh, try to identify parks that we can open. That will not make the impacts that Ronald Reagan or that a Bird's Saw would have, but allow. Uh, becau- because even if you're walking to your local park. We've been closed six weeks now, you're bored of that park, let's, let's, so a destination park, but a small one, one that, you know, that, you know. I don't know, I I I just feel like we've been given this little bit of latitude. And if we don't latch onto it and actually just use it a little bit, the county's going to say, well, no one seemed to care about, you know, having that flexibility, so let's keep the hammer down. And so I I'd rather see us take advantage of that little bit of flexibility they're giving us, because we want more of that. We want to actually, it's like every federal agency and, you know, they, they spend every dollar every fiscal year because they need to ask for 10% more next year. And so that's what I want to do, I want to be able to say, hey, we took your flexibility, we opened these parks right here. And it, they seem to work out and we'll monitor it, you know, we'll, we'll say, hey, okay, so it did seem to work out. You know, maybe we could open a Bird's Saw or a Ronald Reagan down the road. You know, after we see what kind of impact these smaller parks would have. So I I still want to see something happen, I don't want to do nothing. And and so that, that's why I, you know, I hear Matt and Zach and Mary Ann. And yet, at the same token, I'm not as, as um, gung ho as Mike. But I think there's something in the middle that we can do to show the county that we want this, we want this choice. We want the, we want to be able to have this in our own uh, hands and our own destiny. And uh, give us a little flexibility. Because right now, we we have none, as far as business is concerned, we'll talk about that hopefully in a, in a minute here. Um, but I I I just, I hate to think we're not gonna, not going to do anything with this, this newfound flexibility. Yeah, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, why don't we, why don't we do this, this is, this would maybe be a good compromise, I. It it it's, it's not everything I would like to see, but but maybe this is a good compromise. Um, the, the effects of Corona here in Temecula have been very minimal. And everybody um, from the president on down is starting to talk about taking an individual approach to areas that are affected. Areas that are not affected don't necessarily need to behave like New York or Los Angeles, etc. But maybe there's a compromise here. Let's go ahead and keep Bird's Saw and Reagan closed, it seems to me that some people feel that that needs to be done, again, I disagree, but. But maybe there's a compromise here. And all things considered, let's pick a date, whether it's a week from now or 10 days from now, if we're at the status quo, then open them up. That, that's the plan, that's, that's what I can live with, there's no reason to come back and have this discussion again. As it relates to the smaller parks, um, let's open them up now, there's no reason not to open up, open them up now. Um, they need to be destinations, there are disabled people who use those parks. I meet a lot of them at the Red Hawk Dog, Dog Park who have to come there via van and 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 elevator and used to get out of their wheelchairs. And bring their dogs, they're used prolifically, right now, they are disenfranchised. Um, I think I can live with that, again, I don't necessarily agree with it, but if it's, if it's a destination park thing, then let's leave, let's leave Harveston closed, let's leave Bird's Saw closed. And let's leave Reagan closed. But if this threshold stays the same as it is today, we don't need to have this discussion again. Um, or we can, or we can agree on what a week from now looks like and where we're comfortable, and I think maybe that's a good compromise.
So, what say you, Zach?
Yeah, so just really quick, just a, you know, just a quick point about Harveston, we haven't closed any parks around Harveston Lake Park.
You know what I mean.
I know, I know, but I'm just, I. Yeah, listen, people are still coming there, so, I mean, that's, you know, neither here nor there, I guess, but. I think what we should do, and 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 I agree with some of the smaller parks, and and to the, to the Red Hawk Dog Park point, I don't have, I genuinely don't have a problem with that. That park has one parking lot and it's actually probably one of the only parks in the city that. Um, has a parking lot and doesn't have residential streets, you know, some somehow attached to it. It's an arterial margarita right next to it, so. Oh, open that parking lot, let people use the Red Hawk Dog Park there, you know, we can, uh, you know, we've already opened a margarita park, so that would. It would make sense, I guess, uh, to do that. But I, but I do think there needs to be some phased approach and we've got to work through Kevin's shop and and see what they're seeing and, you know, i- if if what we're seeing next week is uh, is. No one adhering to to the social distancing and the mask and the and the health orders, maybe the health orders change, yeah, we can certainly reevaluate that and and. Just as quickly as we close them, you, we didn't have to convene a city council meeting to close them and we certainly are going to have to convene a city council meeting to open them, so. We can be nimble and we can do that, I just just want to be measured in what we're doing and and have, you know, not just do it because uh, let's have some, some, wow. Um, let's have some, some, some thought and and have a plan moving forward and 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 really lean on uh, Kevin and and Aaron and and. And their team to give us that data and that information of what they're seeing, because I'll be honest with everyone here, I've been staying home. I, I drove here to City Hall tonight, but I haven't left my neighborhood, I'm not driving around checking everything out, I'm staying put and I'm. What we're seeing in Harveston is probably what a lot of folks are seeing in Red Hawk or in other parts of the city, so. Um, you know, if we can have some sort of, you know, circle back next week a- after the weekend and and see what happens, I I can live with that.
So, let me clarify, so you're okay with opening some of the smaller parks, is that correct?
Well, I think, I, so I, I'm okay currently opening the Red Hawk Dog Park parking lot and opening up the dog park as we can, we can get behind that. And I think what we should do is, we should work through Kevin's shop and and identify some of those smaller parks that we could potentially open, so. Um, there's a couple that come to mind, like I mentioned them earlier, Pabba Ridge is one, Butterfield Stage is one. Um, lo- Long Canyon Creek Park is another one, you know, these are smaller parks with open space and that that have parking lots attached, so. You know, if we have to go that route, but but not just open everything tomorrow, let's, let's. Again, be cautious and be mindful of of health and safety and move forward methodically.
Okay, Mike?
Okay, um, we have what, 41 parks? Is that, is that correct? Let's go down the list, um, we're proud of a park system, let's go down the list, what will keep open and what will keep closed? Uh, as far as parking lots are concerned, um, let's do it.
Well, I I don't think there's, of the 41 parks, there's probably only 10 that even have parking lots, is, isn't that true, most are neighborhood parks? I'm guessing, right, Kevin?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number, but most are, but still, we'll go down the list, we have some, some parks in mind.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're able to.
All I'm asking is, and I think this is prudent, is, is a a prudent plan, is if we're, if we have no problem with the smaller parks. Okay, let's go down the list and and just give staff the okay and let's do it. On the ones that we have a problem with, let's set the threshold, if the baseline is staying the same. And I'm not going to mince words, Matt, I mean, if it goes, if it goes up a little, goes down a little, I'm okay.
But what baseline, Mike, I mean, what are we even talking about?
I don't know, but, but, um, go ahead, go ahead.
What are you using to make these decisions?
Well, I'll tell you what, the, what am I using to make the decisions, is the county said, go ahead and use your discretion, I'm using mine.
Right, but then you're asking us to set a metric to open all the larger parks, what?
Well, uh, well, I I will, I will flip that around on you, I want to know what the metric is to open up those parks. And 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 you're suggesting that we depend on somebody else, I'm suggesting we've been given the go ahead.
Not what I've said, I've said, we are getting edicts from the county that aren't based on information or any clear data. Driven for that decision making, right?
So what do you need? What do you need?
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, that, everybody's talking over each other and you can't actually hear anything, so.
Sorry about that.
You know, let's, let's just, I I want to hear from Mary Ann, she she's been trying to get a word in, I just want to hear what she has to say.
Well, if if the county hasn't given us a criteria and we want to look at this, then maybe we need to establish that criteria, so could we look at? The amount of acreage in the park versus the number of parking spaces, because some parks have a lot of parking places, obviously the sports park have a ton of parking places. But yet some of those more neighborhood parks like Rotary Park or Long Canyon or those have fewer parking spaces. So maybe you want to look at the amount of parking spaces versus, uh, you know, to acres, decide which ones are going to fall above or below a certain threshold.
Well, and I would even suggest looking at parks that are interconnected, so basically if you park here, you can actually take a trail. Because the, remember, the equipment is still all uh, nonusable, so why don't we look at parks that you can go from one park on a trail to another park? That way, if someone wants to bike, if they want to hike, they're, they can park at the park, hike the trail and hike back or whatever. Um, but I I don't think that's a discussion we necessarily need to do tonight, because I'd rather much more talk about the open Temecula. And leave this to Kevin and his, his group to actually identify those parks and those parks that we can open the parking lots successfully. And um, let, let the guys who who know this do it and we, we go and we, we handle the business side of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
What is the definition of successful? Uh, 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 I mean, what I'm trying to get my arms around is, is beyond just opinion. I I mean, in one sense, you know, it's late and and I'd rather not go down through every park, but I'm willing to do that if that's what it takes. But if you want to just give a blanket statement to staff that says, listen, every park with a small parking lot, we can identify or. Leave that up to staff, open, okay? And then I'm good, I'm good with that.
That's what I'm in favor of, actually, I'm in favor of letting Kevin and Aaron look at parks that have some sort of interconnectivity. That can be used for multiple uh, uses, you know, like I said, because the equipment is still down. So it it can't be just the open space, because a lot of these, these ancillary parks that might have a parking lot like Butterfield. Uh, there's trails that go off of Butterfield that, you know, a lot of people, you know, hike from there, so.
But what about something like Riverton Park or some, I mean?
Yeah.
Um, what if they don't have interconnectivity? What about uh, Temecue, doesn't have it, it doesn't have a connectivity?
Right.
But it has a parking lot, um.
Again, I I would say let's let Kevin and his group sit down and figure out, hey, I think we can safely open this park. Based on uh, the, the normal usage of that park, because I'm sure Kevin knows what kind of each park, what kind of. Activity is usually generated each park, let them make. what kind of each park, what kind of activity is usually generated each park. Let them make that decision. Because, you know, we could probably talk about this for a day.
But Mr. Mayor, they, they've already made that decision. That's why we're having this discussion. They, they've already made that decision. They've already said, keep everything closed, e- except those two. And that's why we're having this discussion. They're looking for us to give them direction.
But at the same token, I, I think what they're doing is they're hearing us because that's one thing Aaron really wanted to hear is what are we willing to allow to open up? And i- in my opinion, I'm, I am okay with opening up those smaller parks with smaller parking lots. Use them as a test case. Use them whatever, but let's just see. And like I said, I don't want to lose this opportunity that the county has basically handed to us. Make your own decision on this and then we do nothing with it, you know? So, so I want to see something. We do something.
So let me.
Moves us forward. We want to move that needle a little bit more towards the right.
So again, let me, let me offer this up again. Let's, let's open up the smaller parks, okay? Let's keep the destination parks closed. And I'm more than willing to reconvene this meeting a week from now. We don't have to wait a month. We can do whatever we want.
Right.
Let's just convene this meeting to talk about those other parks. And Matt, at that time, whatever metric that you're using or Mary Ann or anybody else is using today, we can use it to measure a week from now, whatever that is. Okay, and, and, uh, because I don't know what other data we're going to get from the county that they're, they're, what you're saying, if they're not giving it, I wouldn't start to expect it. So I.
But that's my point is we should, right? I'm, I'm.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
One-way conversation with the county telling us, you know, that all of a sudden we're changing this standard or that standard and not providing us any guidance for why that standard was changed. You know, and if, if, if all it takes is to lobby the county because we want, you know, golf courses reopen for economic benefit for our region, you know, that, that's poor decision-making as far as I'm concerned. So if we, we want to do this the right way, I think that's exactly, and that's where getting to your point, Mike. I absolutely want the big parks opened up as well. But I want there to be a standard that's defensible and justifiable on which to do that, not something that's, you know, pulled out of a hat. And so that's what I have with the county over the next week as, as we're preparing this. Because look, there's no, i- i- and I'll, I'll speak to this again in a, in a moment, but there's no time to waste on us trying to figure out, you know, what needs to be done and phased in and so forth. There's a lot of work already happening. We just need to have a stronger seat at the table and we need to be able to feed them information that's unique for our community so that they understand what we want, you know, and that we feed them that information. And then when a decision is made that says, you know, we're, these are the triggers for opening up these types of businesses and other things, then I'll be able to, and we will all be able to be much more comfortable to say things like, okay, now the big parks and the destination places are open because we know that threshold has been met.
And Mike, I would say that, I would say that, that compliance with the distancing would be one of those criteria. I think Temecula residents have been excellent in complying for the most part, whereas maybe people in another city wouldn't be. So I think that's one of the things we need to look at. And if, if we open the smaller parks and compliance doesn't become an issue if people aren't gathering and close together in large groups. And I think that gives us impetus for opening the larger parks.
Okay, I've got a point of order. It's actually, uh, three minutes after eleven.
Move to extend.
Move to extend.
Yeah, we may have to go to twelve, but let's second that motion. I, I'd like to get us to a, to a decision on this. Matt, hold that thought, okay? Because I think that would be part of any motion that gets made. Okay, so hold, hold that thought. May I recommend, I, I don't want to make a motion and put everybody on the spot. I'd like to get to a consensus and, and then, you know, vote if that's what we need to do. I think, Matt, what you just said, it needs to be done. And also add to that, what is the criteria for the play equipment? What is the criteria for the pools and the splash pad? And get a seat at the table. So I think we need to be affirmative in those things and find out what is the basis on their decisions. So any part of any motion, I can agree with that. I would suggest that we open up the smaller parks. I would also suggest that we keep Birdsall, Reagan, Harveston, parking lots closed. And let's reconvene in a week and see where we're at. I'd like to make that a motion if everybody could, could have a consensus. Again, I don't want to put people on the spot.
I'm fine with that.
Matt and Zach, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I'd like to give a little bit more deference to staff. I think Kevin, you and Aaron have, have heard quite a bit of this conversation. And I think you understand the spirit and intent of, of what we're, we're trying to accomplish. Um, and I, I, you know, my understanding, Kevin, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but you probably already have a concept in your mind of which parks fit under this category and not, you know, wanting to go through all forty, you know, forty of them tonight. Uh, you know, I think it, it's fair enough. What I'd like to have is just that list sent to us, you know, in short term. Uh, let us know which ones, you know, you think fo- fall under this category. And Mike, if you're comfortable with that, I mean, we know it's going to be bigger, better, better than fifty percent of the parks in the city. It's going to be some, you know, some decent number. But let's use their guidance. I think they've got that understanding. Shoot us an email. If there is a major consternation that any of us have that says, you know, hey, you know, advocate for this park in our neighborhood or whatever it is, that we say this one makes more sense or this one doesn't make any sense. You know, that we'd be able to kind of just reach out to Aaron and Kevin on our own. Let this run for a week and revisit it and see where we're at.
I got it. So I'm going to try to craft the motion and I think we can get everything you just said there. So, so if, if you'd follow me carefully. Uh, I think it's the council's will that the smaller parks, uh, with the smaller park parking lots be open. That's number one. However, if there is consternation of staff for any particular part that fits that category that shouldn't be open, when we reconvene in a week, and that's part of the motion, we reconvene in a week, staff can present that to us and we can see what they said. Does that cover that, that issue for you, Matt?
Absolutely.
Okay, this, the next part of the motion will be, Matt, you suggested that we need a more affirmative seat at the table. So let staff start to craft what that looks like. And, uh, uh, you can add to this if you want, but of particular interest to me is more criteria as to play equipment, pools and anything else. Um, but the data, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think, you know, and maybe Aaron, you can chime in because I know we've talked a little bit about this, but I, you know, I'm looking for something that's clear, that's defensible, that we could rely on so that as we, because we get these, y- you, you all read them. I look at them. You know, I'm a stats guy. I glean my own data off the websites for CDC and others, and I'm looking at these trends and things. And I'm not seeing any clear decision-making that's tied to the data that are being gathered, right?
So let's pursue that. That, that's what we need to pursue. Aaron, do you, you getting that?
Let's hear from Aaron.
No, I just, I was just going to add that, um, I think what you're describing, Mike, and what Matt's describing is terms of criteria or benchmarks for opening other amenities that we have control over that are currently prohibited. Let's name them. There's the pump track, okay? The skate park, the splash pad. The county health is not allowing those to be open right now. I think your next agenda item that we're going to discuss, the, the, what does the reopening of Temecula look like? Includes a section for government. And I think in that section of government is where we address the very things that you guys just discussed, which is what do our facilities, what is this facility, City Hall? When do we think it's going to be appropriate to be reopened for the public? What about the skate park? What about the pump track? What about Eagle Sore? Those are things that we will address to, in our correspondence to Dr. Kaiser and Riverside County Health officials if that's the direction that you give us tonight. But I, I think that can be part of framed in that next, that next action item that we're looking for here. Right now, what I'm looking for is consensus and I, it seems like we're getting closer on the balance and how to handle the balance of the parking lots and then the dog parks. So that's.
So let me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Matt, is that okay with you? If the criteria is addressed in the next item we address, but the consternation issue will leave to staff? Is that okay?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Zach?
Okay, so, so I'll make a motion. May I, is it okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, wait, wait one second. I just want to hear what Zach has to say.
Let me just add one thing. And the one thing that I want to, to make sure is when, when we reconvene in a week that we get data from our park rangers and what's actually happening in the parks. Cause I think that's an important component of it. If we're opening these things and we're not seeing social distancing, if we're seeing large, large congregations and, and those are things that concern me. So if we're not seeing that, we need to take that into account. So if we just add that to it, I can get comfortable with what we're talking about here.
I think that's acceptable.
Gentlemen, if we don't establish some criteria, we're no better off in the county.
Right.
You, you know, um, and along with what you said, Zach, I, I think uh, if there, if social distancing or the criteria for safety is not being utilized, I'd also like to see that we do have the staff and a gentle nudge in the right direction will, will move ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the people. Uh, the knuckleheads will never move. So let's see what happens, okay? Let's, let's see. I'm, I'm, I'm all for them.
I said, let's do, let's see what happens.
Let's see what happens. So I'm going to craft a motion and I hope it, it appeals to everybody. Staff is directed to open up the smaller park parking lots, okay? With the exception that staff has discretion on those parts where there is consternation. Okay, and you can explain, staff will explain the consternation when we meet as a council in one week from now. Did I miss anything? Oh, the larger parks for the time being, uh, and I'll name them Birdsall, Reagan and Harveston, those parking lots will remain closed. And we'll discuss it the next week. I don't think we need to lay any criteria. Let's just, let's just see how we feel next week. Is, that'll be a motion. Does anybody want to amend that motion or give me an amended second or is that good?
I, I would, I would second that.
And we'll include, we'll include the data associated with, um, the park rangers that Councilman Schwenk and we'll bring that back in one week.
Yes.
But if we can also deal with the, the two dog parks, that would be helpful as well.
So part of that motion will be to open up the dog parks and include Zach's recommendation of, of ranger feedback and staff feedback. Matt, are you good with that as a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, roll call vote, sorry.
Well, did you do a roll call vote on that? Um, Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenck?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right, so now we're on to the discussion on, uh, reopening Temecula. And so we don't have any staff reports or anything, but Aaron, start off with something.
If, if, if the subcommittee would like me to tee this up, I'm, I'm happy to give you a real brief sort of vision of, of what I think we discussed a week ago or what I see kind of being, you know, doable here. Um, would that be okay?
I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine with that, yes.
So, um, I, I think what the staff report basically opined was, you know, the President of the United States has unveiled sort of parameters to open our country. Governor Newsom has unveiled parameters to open our state. It would be our hope that Riverside County Health officials, um, can put together a plan to reopen Riverside County. Uh, to do so, rather than wait back and wait for that to happen in an unknown period of time, we, the city of Temecula would be charged with putting together a letter to Dr. Kaiser, the health officials at Riverside County, you know, seven, eight-page letter broken down into sectors, whether it be hospitality and tourism, uh, you know, the hotels, uh, the mall, pachanga, uh, small business, large business, restaurants, government. And, and basically at a very, very high level, we would insert sort of suggestions and timing and socially responsible timeframes or phasing that we want them to seriously consider and then engage in, in sort of conversation that we, that we haven't had to date. And, and we think we can have some influence. We can be a positive influence. My colleagues, uh, around the region are, are watching this and I think they will follow suit. So it won't just be Temecula that's sort of uh, saying, hey, look at us. We have one, one incorporated city in Riverside County is volunteering to push us or be proactive here. Um, I think it can be, um, a really, uh, good situation. So I think what we're looking for tonight is concurrence or direction, if that's a vision that we all share. We can get this put together in, in short order. In my opinion, this goes out next week unless the full council wants time to review it. Um, and then we need to come back and, and share it with you next week. But I think we could turn this thing around in, in forty-eight, seventy-two hours. We already have opinions from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, VTV, the mall. We have their reopening plans. We would be inserting pieces of that into this correspondence with Dr. Kaiser and addressed to the Board of Supervisors. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll open it up.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I have, I have a comment that goes along with that. We just can't be arbitrary. That's the thing. We have to establish criteria that is measurable or that it's easy to identify. If somebody says, why are you doing this? We can tell them why we're doing it and what the parameters are. And, uh, just like we kind of did with the parks based, I mean, we, based on square footage versus, you know, um, parking space. So, um, and I think that's a good place to start. And I also think that the businesses that have, uh, limited the number of people that can be in the store at a time, um, you know, might be a good place to, to start also. Based on, they've done it based on square footage, I think.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Aaron e- explained a good end game that he's been talking to Zach and I about. And, and I, I want to just elaborate a little bit because the, the end game he explained has a lot of elements in it. I think I want to point that out so everybody out there listening understands where we're coming from. Obviously, uh, Dr. Kaiser at the county has to obey what the, what the state hands down. And so he's got to, um, write a playbook based on what the state is giving him. And, um, at the same time, he's, uh, giving us directives and yet, um, as good as the doctor is doing, um, especially since there is no playbook here for a virus, the doctor, I, I'm presuming is, is not necessarily a businessman. And what I mean by that is he's not a restaurateur. He's not a nail salon owner or barber shop owner or let's just, we can continue to go down the list. And all of these businesses can come up with innovative ways in which they can take the guidelines coming down from the state and implement them in their businesses. Um, there is no reason why that cannot happen. We already know that it's happening. Um, when we look at how it works in a Walmart, a Costco, the supermarket and a host of others. If a restaurateur or any other small business can demonstrate they can, they can adhere to certain guidelines while those guidelines are necessary, then the case can be made that they can open. And under that premise, Temecula can open. There's no reason why anything needs to be closed. Um, if it can fit in that window. What Aaron was suggesting and what we were talking to him about, Zach and I, is taking all the information that he had just mentioned, input from all of the businesses in our community and drafting the criteria that would, that would demonstrate or explain to those we answer to, the county and the state, that if we do this, this and this, we've complied with your criteria. Therefore we wish to open, allow us to do so. And that has to be done with a very affirmative voice. A voice that takes control of our destiny here in Temecula. And then that's all we can do. We've complied with doing what. And then that's all we can do. We've complied with doing what we're entrusted to do.
So my my next question, Mr. Mayor, is do we include in that criteria a way to measure compliance? I mean, that that can be a huge thing, trying to police that and make sure that everyone's complying, even if they establish their own criteria. How do we do that?
I I don't know that, I don't know, I don't know that we're able to measure everybody. And and I think this is my personal opinion now, that that once we start to say we're going to be the social engineering police, it breaks down. It's one thing to say, everybody stay home, because that's a, that's something everybody can understand. But every business is different. I I mean, I don't want to get too direct, but you know, and forgive me, Stu. I think Stu should open. I think people should be able to get haircuts, put on a mask, put on the distancing. I think the same way with the nail salons. It can be done. He can figure it out. Now, do you have to pollute, police the nail salons? No, we can't do that. The state can't do it, the county can't do it. And since it can't be done, what is the threshold will will be released? All of us as as just Americans and human beings, what what is the edict that will say, you can do it now? Nobody knows. Nobody will tell us. It's been left left up to Governor Newsom and he hasn't said anything. Other than we'll see what happens. So I think everybody as, Americans will find a way, Temeculans will find a way. We have to stay on that track, okay? And if we encounter problems, we'll deal with them. That's that's my two cents.
Question, what do we, you know, what do we do in those cases?
Well.
I agree with everything you said.
My problem.
I don't know what we do. I, you know what? Let's deal with that when we get there. I don't know that it's ours to deal with.
I'm a businessman and I literally am losing about twelve thousand dollars a month that we've been closed down. Literally, I mean, it's literally, and and I I don't mean income. I'm I'm saying, I'm writing a check for twelve thousand dollars a month to sit and do nothing. And so that is what's frustrating and it's frustrating to all the business people in Temecula is we have, we're we're looking at data from countries that shut down and countries that didn't shut down. And the data is almost parallel with each other. So it's like, why, why are we still shut down? I still am not getting this. I mean, to me, the data doesn't support what we're doing today. And, you know, Matt's a big data person and I'm still scratching my head thinking, okay, one third of one percent is actually getting this virus and then one.
Hey, hang on, I mean.
It's minute though. I mean, whatever the percentage is, it's so miniscule, I don't understand.
We don't know that, right? Everybody, everybody, you know, in the last four weeks has become a public health expert and surprisingly attended, you know, a a doctorate program in in both statistics and public health. And and, you know, spouts off all these numbers as though they're they're real and they're not, you know. So I what I I want, I want us to be very careful with our language here because, you know, one of the, one of the things that we need to recognize, and Peter, you'll you'll appreciate this, but and 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 maybe you can remember the court case. But there was a court case years ago that Supreme Court heard that had to deal with pornography, right? And and one of the Supreme Court decisions, and Randy, maybe you remember the court name or the court case, but it basically, the the decision in in its essence said, you know, one of the justices wrote that no threshold for it. It's that I'll know it when I see it, right?
That was the Larry Clent case.
And I feel like, yeah, and I feel like we're we're kind of in that position right now that we are asking the 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 nation, the state, the county to provide us with guidance on what is that threshold, right? We have had extremely limited opportunities for testing. We don't know how many people in fact have been infected in the city of Temecula, let alone Riverside County or the state of California. You know, and they have these models that, you know, are based off of the data. Now, you know, it went from, we only want to test sick people, which is how they needed to start, to now we want to test everybody else, you know, to start to understand how this had penetrated the population so we can build better models. And if you recall, in the earliest stages of this, we've got Governor Newsom talking about how twenty-five million Californians are going to become infected. You know, and and so what I'm, what I'm saying is if we're going to have these conversations and we're going to ask for the ability to put something in place, share the models. What numbers are you looking at? Because I can't tell, right? And we simply, just like I said, we don't have a seat at the table enough to know as as a body of decision makers, you know, to know what those models are. When is that threshold met? When is that trigger going to occur that says businesses can open? Are we on track? Are we, you know, potentially two weeks away or or six months away? We we get none of that information back. You know, what can we do in specific sectors to help? Are you seeing cases that are occurring, they're supposed to be tracking all of this information, right? Are you seeing cases that are occurring that are related to one industry more than another, right? And 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 where are those problem areas and what could we be doing to help alleviate those concerns in those problem areas? None of this information is being provided to us. So, you know, I I I look, when we started this conversation a month ago, you know, I remember saying, one of the things I really wanted was the food sector, right? If we're gonna keep our food industry open and the drive-throughs and the food delivery service and all of that, let's make sure there's protocols in place. And so we had this conversation with county health afterwards when I made that comment and they said, here's all the stuff. And we pushed out a lot of information to our local businesses. And what I haven't heard in the last month is that there's, you know, COVID-related incidents related to food service industry, right? So, sounds like maybe something good has happened there. And I agree a hundred percent with what you said, you know, Stu and Mike. And, you know, and Mary Ann is that, yeah, there are things that we can do in our local businesses to protect the public. But what we're all waiting for is that trigger that says, now we can start doing those things, right? So we have two tasks in front of us right now. One is every business, you know, and sector, and this is what Aaron was getting at earlier. Whether it's, you know, government reopening, our relationship with local governments around us, including the tribe, whether it's manufacturing, tourism, hospitality, schools, you know, whatever those different sectors are, we need to, right now, start creating those guidelines of these are the things you need to be doing as a business, right? And we've seen some of it work, right? But again, we can spend all of our time creating those those protective measures in concert with public health in the county and all that. But we need to know, you know, what are those thresholds that we will be looking for in order to start opening up and phasing in certain sectors? You know, if we're opening up the restaurants, are we looking at, you know, every other table being opened? You know, clearly, if you're at a restaurant, you're not gonna be wearing a face mask. It's gonna make it really hard to eat, right? So I mean, you know, let's talk about the 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 more pragmatic side of what we expect to have in these different businesses. And, you know, and and, you know, the the, you know, the tools that the county is failing to give us in order to 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 get there. There's a lot of task force. I'm not saying, I don't think the city needs to create its own task force. There's, there's a task force for everything right now out there. We just need to be more actively engaged, invited to that table and and make sure that the county is sharing as much information with us as possible so that we can prepare our businesses, our residents, our schools, everything else, you know, for the inevitable move. And then I'll just end by saying one thing. I I have come to despise the term, the new normal, right? That is such an overused, you know, term. It just, it's frustrating to me because, you know what? We don't want the new normal. We want normal, right? Eventually, that's our goal. We don't want to to settle for this, you know, sort of dystopian community that, you know, we're we're now living in. We want normal back. How do we get there, right? We know it's gonna be a struggle, but how do we get there? And that's what I'm looking for.
I want to state the frustration as a business person of the paralysis of analysis. And that's what seems to be happening at all levels of government right now. No one wants to make a decision or make an opinion on fear that they're gonna be wrong. And you know what? In life, we make a lot of wrong decisions. And, you know, you just pick yourself up by the bootstraps and you keep going. And it's like, I am, I am incredibly frustrated right now from just seeing countries that didn't do anything except for protect those people who were that vulnerable population. They isolated those people. Those countries' numbers are no different than ours. And and why aren't we looking at those countries? Why aren't we, why don't we get out of our own heads? And let's get into some other countries that did it differently than we did it and look at those numbers. Let's let's study what they did and how that ended up for them and how it translated translates into us. Because I don't think there'd be ever enough data to open.
Not not for a hundred percent sure, not to be a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, so it it's like, I mean.
Is that we want that information. We want that information to be shared with us so we have a little bit more certainty in the decision-making process.
I'm wondering if they even have it, though.
But and and that's my concern. If they don't, let us know that. But but I I'll I'll just say, Stu, comparing California to Norway, you know, just, I I, you know, it, we're the fifth largest economy in the. The 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 ability for travel and everything else occurring, I I, you know, those, those are very different case studies. Retrospectively, this is gonna be a fascinating study in public health. But right now, we need to focus on not what other countries or their regions have done, but what is going to work for our region and the city of Temecula.
But but you can make the argument though that you can't compare Los Angeles or New York to Temecula. And so, you know, just like, just like you can't, we can't compare ourselves to Finland, but you can compare Finland to Sweden. And you can, you can compare like countries. And and, you know, that that's what I'm saying. That's the data I want to see. The data that seems like it's coming out of the United States is all like, like I said, it's the paralysis of analysis. They just want to keep analyzing it and no one wants to make a decision one way or another. And it's like, we've got to, we've got to move the needle. We've got to move towards normalcy again. And I'm just not seeing it from anybody out there. That's what's frustrating me.
Mr. Mayor, move to extend to eleven forty-five. There's one decision we can make.
Well, we better extend till twelve, cause we're not gonna be out of here at eleven forty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Move to extend to twelve.
Twelve. We're good? All right. Yes, Zach.
So just really quickly, I want to add a few points. One of the things that I think I want us to focus on is is focus on what we can control, right? Like, we want to be able to focus on the things that we can control. And one of those things is making sure we're at the table with Supervisor Washington and the task force. And but not just us, we need to circle in the community. And we need to make sure, and I know, you know, VTV will be there and the chamber will be there and Pachanga will be there. But we need to make sure that all businesses in our community are represented. Every sector of our of our economy needs to be there and be at that table and we need to facilitate that. You know, we need to also make sure that, you know, are the businesses and the residents getting the the financial support they need that that's come down from the federal and the state government? Is that happening, you know? I'm hearing a mixed bag, you know, from friends and and people that we know. They've applied for paycheck paycheck protection and they haven't received anything, or they haven't received a stimulus check and and they're they're struggling. So how do we fill that gap? How can we help out? If we do some sort of rollout with businesses in the city, how can we ensure that they have the supplies they need to clean and to protect their employees and 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 then people coming into the business? Maybe we need to provide those. Or maybe we need to to be a part of that supply chain to make sure that there is access to that stuff to help them so that they can open. We need to certainly focus on our local economy. I think that's the, you know, you're gonna see these, the the shop local thing is gonna gonna be a major component, but but maybe there's a way to rethink what does that mean? And what is truly, you know, supporting your local economy mean? I think, you know, coming out of this, there's gonna be some heavy discussions of of how we can better support our local economy. You know, I think obviously the health and safety of the workers and 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 our community and and Temecula residents is is first and foremost. And we have to do whatever we can at that. Having that seat at the table with Supervisor Washington so that we can run that up to Riverside County. And and you're right, you know, I've heard it from everyone here, you know, we are unique, we're different. What works in LA doesn't work in Temecula and vice versa. And so there's, there's value in that. I I'll end with this. I had a friend say, you know, it's like, we're all in this together kind of thing. And but everyone's in it, but they're experiencing different things. And the folks have lost their jobs. Some people haven't lost anything. There's retired folks that their daily life hasn't changed. They're walking their dog more than they've ever walked, you know. So they're, they're experiencing, people are experiencing this differently. And I think we need to be mindful of that. There are a vast array of experiences that we're, we're dealing with and and try to understand those diverse set of experiences that we're seeing in our city. Cause everyone's struggling with this in one way or another.
Mike, what do you say?
Couple of things. You know, ever since this city incorporated, we have been leaders. We have been the ones that have set the, set the the standard and many people have copied us. Temecula is not an accident. And I always have to keep reminding people of that. There is a one billion dollar a year economy here. It didn't just appear. It was created by a lot of people who led the way, who took risks, set the standard and created what's here today. You're looking at the winery, you're looking at Pachanga, you're looking at all the small businesses that came out here and and took the risk and and made the leap and made the success. We, you know, I understand, Zach, you want to focus on what you can control. I would take that and say, I'd like to be the one in control. That's what I would like to do. I'd like to say, this is what what we think ought to be done and then send that up the chain. Now, you can make the argument, I'm looking at you now, Matt, we don't have the data. We don't know. We don't know what the model says, et cetera. I don't know, now going to Stu, that will ever know that. I I just don't know. I don't even think people are telling us the truth. I don't want to even go, go down the path of conspiracy theories. There's no point in that. I just think everybody everywhere has an agenda and somehow or another, the truth gets clouded. Sixty percent, we employ here in the Temecula region, sixty percent of all the jobs. Just think about that for a second. I do not think we have the luxury of waiting or the luxury of running ten models or the luxury of comparing models. We just don't have that luxury. I think about a winery that, like Stu mentioned, he's cutting the check for twelve thousand a month just to continue to be Stu's, okay? I think of a winery who have acres and acres of acres of crates that are budding right now that need to be watered, fertilized, maintained, okay? That that wineries are paying for. I'm looking at their mortgages. I'm looking at the lessees of all of our commercial centers, okay? Who aren't gonna be able to pay their rents. And you follow that up the chain, the the owners of these properties aren't gonna be able to make their debt service. It it, the tentacles of this thing are so, are so wide and broad, you can't even get your arms around it. I would like, again, I'm gonna reiterate, because I think it's the simplest path. Every restaurateur, every winery, and I can name every sector, I don't need to, can take the criteria that has been given down from the governor and implemented in his business. I think it's incumbent upon us to trust in that. How do we police it? I don't know. I don't know that it's for us to police, but I'll tell you. In another sixty days or another thirty days, some of this stuff is not recoverable, okay? It's just not. And and yet, at the same time, we're, 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 we're not being affected like Los Angeles or like New York or, and and I'm using those as extremes, cause there's everything in between. There's just not a lot of the virus going around here in Temecula and the Temecula region. Could we be wrong? Could we make a monumental mistake? Yeah, but I'll tell you what, we'll all make it together. All hundred and fourteen thousand residents will be part of that, all of our businesses, everybody who works here. It's just, that's it. That's what we have to do. We'll all do it together. That's the only thing we can do. I don't, I don't see what other. I don't, I don't see what other recourse we have. Let's set the criteria and tell Governor Newsom. I mean, he doesn't know Temecula.
I wrote it. I told him just that.
Yeah, yeah. He doesn't know Temecula. I mean, he doesn't know any city in particular. And he, if you take him at face value, and for now, let's do that. I don't want to bash the governor, no point in it, although it's, anyway, there's no point in it. He's going, going to be err on the side of uber cautious. And you can make the argument, but maybe that's good. Maybe he's got to look at California in total, the whole. At the same time, we're all going to die out here. And I mean, I mean that figuratively, not literally. Give it another thirty days and everything's just going to collapse. Still recoverable. Right now, it's still across the nation. It's still recoverable. But another thirty days, it may not be.
Matt, what do you got to say?
Well, I, just, you know, Mike, I, there's not a lot I'm, I'm disagreeing with here because I wanted to be real clear about something, though. When I, when I talk about data and I talk about models and all that, I'm not asking that we analyze ten models and collect more data and all that. I'm asking, why aren't they being more transparent with us of what they are doing? What those models look like, what the targets are? So we can judge for ourselves how quickly we're, we're recovering? How, you know, are we going in the right direction? You know, I mean, I don't want to be too blunt about it, but, but look, when this whole thing started up, you know, we were provided with information from public health that wasn't publicly available. And I remember having a conversation with private, early on, and I know a couple of you did as well, saying, hey, our residents need to know some of this information. Why aren't we putting this on a website? Why aren't we telling them how many patients we have in a hospital locally? Why aren't we providing that information? Because maybe people would be making different decisions, right? And, and so there was this, you know, sort of, I, I think, lack of, of appropriate conversation and representation. And so a, all I'm saying is, yes, this needs to be a science-driven process. Yeah, we don't have, we've never experienced something like this before. So we don't have the perfect answer. And, and Mike, I know, you know, we don't want to make a mistake. You know, if you go back into the history and you look at nineteen eighteen and what San Francisco did, opening up too early and resulting in more deaths, because they made mistakes, right? So we don't want to be in that position and we want to be conservative in this approach. But we want to know, you know, are we getting close? How, you know, where, where is that target? And it's kind of like, you know, watching that graph and that, you know, talking about the bending of the curve. Is it bent enough? Are we, are we, you know, weeks away? Are we, you know, we just don't have that, that sort of guidance. And so we want our business owners, you know, Stu and, and everybody else out there, we want our business owners to be fully prepared to make those decisions that said, I need, you know, because there's going to be time delays in all of this. You know, what I don't want is, I don't want the county just saying, okay, now everybody go reopen, right? I want them to come to us and say, one week from now, these are the list of businesses that can reopen under these conditions, right? Two weeks from now, we expect, you know, if the trend continues, this is what we would see. And but we are getting none of that information right now.
So let's push it, Matt. Let's push it. And that's what, that's what I'm saying. And I think the plan that Aaron outlined does that. Let's push it. We come up with the, we meaning our community, our business community can figure out what they need to adapt to the guidelines that are, that are established now. And if, and if we're told no, then we push the issue to get exactly what you're talking about. Why no? What are you talking about? What, you know, why, why can't you have a Walmart open but not a church? I, I, I mean, I don't even want to open up that issue, but it's a valid question. What the heck is your criteria? Okay, I, I mean, it, it doesn't make sense. And I would say we push it.
And we've got to be able to, if we establish the criteria, but we don't have a way to check on it or to correct it if people aren't observing it, then what's the point of establishing the criteria?
Because people will, will self-correct. And I'll tell you why they'll self-correct. You mentioned nineteen eighteen in San Francisco. I can assure you that, at least I'll speak for my own family, but I think I can speak for everybody here. If I start seeing people get sick and or dying, I will stay in the house. And so will everybody else. And I won't go to the restaurant. And I won't do all these things that we're talking about. But we're not seeing that. That's the thing, that we're seeing.
Matt had mentioned nineteen seventeen and I, but I agree. We have to consider things because it's serious. This is nothing to take lightly, certainly. But again, economic failure is nothing to take lightly either. We just have to, we just have to remember that mistakes can, in this case, cost lives. And I'm ready to open. I mean, I want to make it open as much as we can.
I don't even know how we define a mistake, okay? I, I mean, the only way not to, life is full of mistakes. I don't know how you handle this mistake-free. The only way to handle it mistake-free is to make no decision and be as restrictive as possible. That's the only way to be mistake-free. And that's not even a hundred percent.
No, it's not mistake-free because you're talking about economic ruin in that case.
Well, well, that's, that's the whole point. That's, that's the whole point of this discussion.
I need that point as well. I just, everybody has to just take this within the, within the, within the guidelines of the fact that, and a mistake is allowing people to have direct contact or just releasing, you know, letting up all the restrictions and people decide to go and have full contact and then people start dying. I don't, you know, I don't want.
You need to trust people. You need to trust people. That's what we're built on, Temecula, all the way across the nation. Trust people, they know what to do.
I'd like to, I'd like to have Aaron chime in right now.
I just, I was just going to add something. I didn't want it to get lost in the conversation because it's, it's actually a very good thing. And I think it's relevant to what I'm hearing you guys say about influence and, and being at the table. You know, I'm, I'm thrilled that there's two task force that have been created within our county. One, at the Riverside County as a whole, there's a task force. There's a Temecula representation that's already been appointed to that. That's, that's a seat at the table countywide. Now, our good friend and third district supervisor Chuck Washington, he's also formed a fifteen-person task force for just the third district, which is going to heavily be represented by, you know, our local economy, our tourism economy, our wineries, hospitality, our business community. And, and that's, that's good. That's good for us. And, and I know it's not related to the agenda item, but I, but I do think it's relevant to, to what we're talking about. If, if, if the council concurs that it's, it's worth going on the record and, and drafting, you know, sort of what a reopening plan can look like, even though I don't have all the answers, I'm not a medical doctor, I'm not going to have the criteria and thresholds sorted out in the next forty-eight, seventy-two hours, I, I think there is value in going on the record with a game plan that may or not be started at the county level and sort of kickstarting that logic and that thought and then opening up the conversations for the details and getting into the weeds. But I think we need to present a really high-level reopening plan. And Temecula can do it. Like I said, many of our partners have already done that on their own volition. We take that information, we insert our, our own, you know, opinions on this. And then we, we send it and then we stand ready to talk to them and answer questions and challenge them and be their partner. And again, this isn't adversarial. This is, you're a partner, you're calling the shots. We want to help you, we want to be proactive. So the two task force are going to be huge. Looking forward to that. I think this other thing that, that you guys are debating, I think will have tremendous value in going on the record as well.
Mike, can I chime in real quick? With that, just, just real quick, you know, I, and, and Aaron, I appreciate you bringing that up because we do need to have a strong voice at that table. And I think we can provide a lot of additional guidance and clarity. But going back to what Peter said at the very beginning of the evening here and what you mentioned as well, it's not our decision, right? I mean, that's, that's the thing, this still isn't our decision. So in this letter and in our conversations from here on, first of all, I, I, you know, want to say, I think we need to meet more frequently now because I would, I think we're going to be making more decisions and having to have, you know, more communication with the public than, than, you know, than where we have been. And so we need to, to, you know, figure that one out. But, but the other thing is, you know, in general, one of the things we need from the county is better overall communication because people, including us, just this conversation we're having here this evening, are desperate for information on where we are and where we are going and what to expect, right? And we need that information so we can prepare ourselves and our businesses and our families for what lies ahead. And, and so, you know, funny enough, you also started this conversation, talking about nineteen eighty-nine when the city incorporated. And we sort of divested our authority in public health to the county of Riverside. You know, if we never did that, we wouldn't be having this conversation, asking all these questions and not having answers. We would have our own public health officials helping guide us. And so one thing I'd like us to keep in the back of our minds here is maybe we need to have that conversation about whether that's a good thing going forward. Not that, you know, I hope, hope to God, you know, we never see another pandemic in our lifetimes. But, but maybe we need to really have a conversation about what it means to have your own public health officials in your own city to help make these kinds of decisions so that we aren't, you know, that, that some future council isn't sitting here, you know, close to midnight on a Tuesday night, having the same debate and dialogue and still being, you know, i- in the dark on so many issues.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Let me hear from Zach. I haven't heard from Zach yet.
No, I mean, again, I'll just sort of reiterate. I think, you know, being, having a seat at the table is the most important thing. And, and Mike, you know, you know, saying, you know, I, I want to control what we can control. It's just being realistic, you know, like, you know, Councilmember Ron just brought it up. And, and Peter brought it up at the beginning. It's like, you know, we, we've seeded this power away, you know, in some respects. And, you know, having a Riverside County Public Health official for the last thirty years has been a fairly decent deal for the city, right? Until we have hit a pandemic, right? This is the first time we're sort of debating whether or not we should have this. So, you know, I, yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to go too much longer, but, you know, we can be prepared, we can be prepared, knowing our community like we know our community. And we can be ready to go with the game plan so that when things roll out, we're there. And we can, again, we can communicate that up to Riverside County and say, look, this is where, what we're seeing. This is what we want done and, and use that to our advantage, but be prepared moving forward. Matt, to your point about information, you know, it's, it's frustrating. Today, I'll use the example, I watched the live stream at four o'clock and there was very little information. And it's frustrating to, to need this information to then disseminate it back to the community. And there's very little there. You know, two days ago, we saw a twenty-three additional deaths in one day. And then you get some clarification and it was an audit that was basically the week prior. And that's frustrating because you're relying on that as, as a public official, relying on that and you're getting, you know, I'm, I'm doubting, you know, what is tomorrow going to look like? What is next Sunday going to look like if we're not reporting on the weekends? Or if there's some, some issues with reporting? So it's frustrating on, on my, on my end for the data, just understanding it and going, is this what is, are we getting this? You know, as quickly as we can because we're make, trying to make these decisions. Again, it's just frustrating. So, you know, let's have that conversation about public health in, in the city. And let's have the, let's have a game plan and, and let's put out what we want and push it forward and, and go from there. And we can lead easily. We will do that, we'll continue to do that. I'm, I'm confident in that. But we, we certainly need to be prepared.
So if we have any viewers left, I do want to re, point something out. A large percentage of cities do not handle their own public health. You know, cities of our size, under probably two hundred and fifty thousand, rely on the county for a public health department. So, Aaron, did you want to?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, to that point, the, the model that we have right now as far as relying and being dependent on county health for services and oversight is the model in the state of California. In fact, we looked it up today. There's only three cities in the entire, of the four hundred and eighty-eight in the state of California that have their own health department. So we're definitely in the majority as it relates to this arrangement.
So, Mr. Mr. Mayor, if I may, because I, I want to craft a, a motion here in a second. But I want to speak to what Matt said. Because, Matt, when you say something like that, you're, you're, I want to say I'm your huckleberry. I, you're talking my game. Just because that's the model in California doesn't mean it has to be our model. And we're always, since day one, created what our model's going to be. So I'm not, you know, Aaron, it is the model. You're absolutely right. But if we find it's better for us to have our own panel of doctors and decide what's best for our community, then that's what we will do because that's who we are. Matt, I'll ask you if we could, I would like to address that, just not right away. Let's kind of clear the decks. But I'm, I'm with you on that one. Because that's how we got fifty million dollars from the federal government. That's why we started a task force of widening the fifteen freeway with no idea of how that was going to happen. And now we're getting, you know, extra lanes being held paid for Caltrans. We're always leading the way because we are that way. I'm going to craft a motion because I think we're all saying the same thing.
Can I, can I just chime in real quick, Mike? On the, on the health, I, I agree a hundred percent. I know, I know Peter was going to chime in there, but, but decided not to. I don't, I don't want to break the model for the state of California necessarily. But I want to be able to work with, whether it's you, Mike, or somebody else, to, to do two things. One is perhaps we need to contemplate having our own community health czar that is our, you know, touch point to community health and/or create what other cities have done, our healthy community initiatives in partnership with our local hospital and other experts. So I think that, you know, that is a good conversation for us to have at a later date. But I think it's something that we definitely need to address as a city.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Let me just weigh in just for only a couple of seconds. That's a good conversation to have. Go ahead and have it, but don't forget, when a pandemic comes along, you've also got to deal with the governor and the state health system, right? So it's just because you have your own, doesn't mean you're off the hook in terms of, 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 of dealing with a bureaucracy, right?
And there's a lot more broad consequences than that. You're taking on a lot more than just making those types of decisions, taking on the provision of services and all kinds of things. So that's something to consider.
Let's have that conversation. I think that would be, that's a good conversation to have. And I'm going to try to craft a motion and I'll throw that in there. Mr. Mayor, may I do that? Is that fine with you? Okay, all right. I think we're all saying the same thing. So Aaron has drafted a game plan and I, I think that we support the game plan in this fashion. That, that using his discretion, he solicited our local businesses, interacting with Pachanga, the Chamber of Commerce, and again, I'll leave it to his discretion, our large businesses and our small representatives from that sector to understand what they need to get open, okay? In accordance with the guidelines we're dealing now, we're dealing with now. To take those, that information to craft Temecula's plan and take that to our seat at the table with the two county task force, the third district task force and the countywide task force. In addition, at a later date, we will have the discussion of having, or at least talking about more health information under our control. I, I, I probably could have made it more concise, but I think I covered everybody. Is, is there, is there a second or consensus?
I can, that motion, absolutely.
Do, do I need to reiterate, Matt?
Yeah, clarify that for me again.
Okay, I could, I could probably, yes, I, I can get more concise.
Yeah.
Motion will be that we direct Aaron Adams to interact with our business community, okay? To receive feedback and understanding on how to get their businesses open in accordance with the guidelines set down through the governor and to local county official. That he'll prepare a pay. That he'll prepare a paper or a report reflecting that information. He'll, he'll give that to the city council, and the council representative to both the county task force and the third district task force will get that information, and that will be our voice on a countywide basis. In addition, we will have at a future meeting a discussion on, uh, a more broad control as it relates to information and influence on a medical basis. Based on, I think you understand what I'm getting, uh, other than the county health, or at least getting more information from county health. Is that concise enough?
Well, I would like to, I would like to have something that we're gonna actually send a letter or some sort of a, something to the county health department and the governor, uh, uh, clarifying what Temecula in this region is compared to other parts of the state and even the county, and that, you know, we should be treated differently. There should be a, a difference between, uh, Temecula and San Francisco or Redding and Modesta, and, you know, the, every city has a different profile. And I, I think we need to have not only a seat at the table, but I think we almost need to demand a seat at the table. And whether it's a strongly worded, I don't know, I, I just, I, I'm hearing from the frustrated businessmen, uh, men in this town, I'm one of them. And, and I, I don't want to do mamby-pamby anymore. You know, I, I want to get serious and get something to where they actually get off their rears and, um, start looking at comparisons between communities. You know, not just LA or San Francisco or whatever. I want them to look at our area and say, eighty-nine cases? Really? Okay, you know, and, and, and make accord, judgments, judgments according to that. Not according to, you know, even today when I heard the governor, you know, we had fifty, fifty-four deaths or something like that in the entire state of thirty-five million people? Are you kidding me? And it's like, we probably had more deaths in car accidents at that same period. So it's like, that's what, that's what I'm hearing, and that's what is in my head right now too, as I'm super frustrated, and I'm frustrated that my voice isn't on these committees. Why am I not being heard? So that's what I want to see.
Case for local control. It's a total case for local control.
Mr. Mayor, let, let me amend my motion that the plan that Mr. Adams will craft will be sent up to the governor with a strong letter that indicates everything that you just said.
Yeah, we, we've got to get them to understand, this is not a one-size-fits-all pandemic. You know, we are socially, we're, we're physically distanced compared to a lot of other cities. You know, you go to Los Angeles, you're, you're breathing the same air with the person right next to you. You're not doing that in Temecula. You know, you're not doing it in Marietta, you're not doing it in Wildemar, you're not doing it in Lake Elsinore, you're not doing it in Menifee. So it's, it's like, come on, we, we've got to think more as a region, and we've got to make them understand, we are not them. And you got to be able to phase in this reopening, allowing areas like us to be first. Allow us to be able to, you know, if you don't want San Diego to reopen, fine. If you don't want LA to reopen, fine, you know, but you got to start somewhere. And that's, that's where the paralysis of analysis comes in, is everybody doesn't want to do anything for fear something might happen. And it's like...
Well, can we, can we, I mean, let's, let's focus back on the, the core issue, which is regional variability, right? I mean, that's, that's the thing, is we need to, and I think that's what we talked about very early on in this conversation, is the, the importance of recognizing that the state's making these decisions, the county is making these decisions, and our authority is extremely limited in this case. But our voice in this motion and what we're going to do and provide with them is to emphasize that the city of Temecula is different and has unique businesses and a character that requires, you know, absolutely not a one-size-fits-all approach to this, recognizing that, you know, it's, it's still a statewide effort, right? I mean, it, you know, I mean, this all started with one person, don't forget. So, you know, so we still have to be able to coordinate, but I think it's important that we recognize the, the, the variability and emphasize that there are things unique to this community, and everyone is going to have, based on the businesses and the schools and the, you know, all that that they have, that there's going to be a different, you know, a, approach to the reopening. And we, we need to be able to work with our county to identify those mechanisms that allow us to reopen in the safest, most efficient, you know, manner possible.
Matt, I amended my motion to include what Stu said regarding sending it up to Sacramento, and I think we're all saying the same thing. Would you second my amended motion?
Yes.
Stu, does that get you what you wanted?
I'm good. Let's, let's light a fire here. That's what, that's what I want to do. We need to light a fire under them because they don't seem to want to move, and we've got to somehow move their needle.
They won't move.
No, but we can try.
Yeah, yes. Oh, no, we, we can. I think we should because I don't expect Sacramento to.
No.
We, we have always been the first to put our boat in the water to see what's around the bend. That's what we're doing here. We're gonna do that, and who knows what will happen? But you gotta do it.
Right.
Well, if it provides a regional solution, so much the better.
Zach, what did you have to say?
So, you know, I can get behind this, and, and I think I, I don't want to, anyone to lose sight of this is, there's not a city in the state of California that doesn't believe that they're unique, right? Like, everyone is going, but we're unique, right? But you have to still be mindful of the fact that we are in this together as a state. And just because we want to open up Temecula, it doesn't mean that, uh, that people from other regions aren't gonna come. And, you know, if you start to look at some of the numbers, you go, you can't, there's no way to keep people from traveling across the county lines to the beaches and, and, and so I just want to be mindful of that. Like, we can, we can do what we're talking about here today, and I don't have a problem with that. But, but what I, what I want to be mindful of, and I'll make this really quick because I know we're...
Hold, hold, hold that thought one second. We got to extend the time, so can someone make the motion to extend to like twelve-twenty?
Move to twelve-twenty.
Okay, second, all those in favor? Yeah. All right, go for it.
Anyways, I just don't want, I, I just want us to be mindful that, that we are in this together a, a, and as, as a region and as a state. And, and there's so much we could go back and forth on this about, but, but the goal is people not dying, and whether someone dies in a car crash, well, you, you can't catch a car crash from someone breathing on you. So there, there's, there's all, there's a whole host of things that we need to be mindful of. And I, and again, I, I support what we're doing here, and I don't have a problem with that. But again, if everybody goes and says, well, we're unique, we should open up, then well, the whole state is opened up like that. So let's be realistic, but be mindful of, of what this is gonna look like. Be prepared, we can do that, and, and, and move this forward in, in a, in a very, very, uh, measured manner, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, I just want to make sure staff understands the motion.
I, I, I do understand the motion. Um, I think Peter's nodding his head, we got it, Randy's got it. My only question would be, um, for the end product, the, the letter, the plan that we put together, um, are you allowing me to sort of, um, take, run with that plan? Or do I need to come back to the full city council or the mayor only and get him or her to sign off on that, and then, then go?
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I think the council should look at that before, before it goes out. I don't necessarily think it needs to be agendized for approval. Um, but I'm, I'm open to that. I, I just, my concern is I want to make sure it addresses what everybody, what everybody's feedback.
Okay.
Mentioned, and I think you have the discretion to do that, if anybody disagrees. But I think we should look at it, I mean, for tweaking.
And I think we all have a unique perspective on this of what we think, you know, is important in that messaging to go back. So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, on this one, but as, as staff, you know, and Aaron's, uh, you know, crafts this document, it's going to include a lot of information from a lot of our community partners and, and so forth, and we'll all be able to sort of, you know, inject our own perspective on that.
I, I would, I would recommend that you bring it back at your meeting next week when you're gonna talk about it because the Brown Act doesn't permit the document to circulate to the five council members and have all of you make little tweaks here and there. Um, first of all, as a practical matter, maybe your tweak isn't agreeable to somebody else. So you, you have that issue as well. So, uh, you, you've got a special meeting coming up a week from now. Uh, you know, that's probably sufficient time to let, because Aaron works quick, uh, to put that stuff together and then bring it back, and then you can all look at it. And even if you needed to, you could all sign it and send it off as, you know, a more powerful political message.
Um, Aaron, can you do this in a week?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make it happen.
Then, um, um, I think we're all in agreement.
All right, so we got a motion and a second? Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Shwink?
Aye.
And Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right, so... Now we go off to commission port reports. We do not have any public safety reports. Fire, are you still awake? There he is.
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Nigar.
No, 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 Brad, you look good on video, but not at twelve, not at twelve ten.
About two hours of sleep last night, so we're doing all right. This will be quick, uh, just a couple of things to go over. Obviously, the call volume has been down a little bit, uh, with everybody being at home. Um, the only thing I want to highlight, if you can, Jonathan, go to the prevention plan review and inspections sheets, the slide number three. Um, the one thing that we have done, if you guys notice on here, is, uh, all the inspectors have been working very hard, diligent, with a lot of the businesses being closed and the schools. Have you noticed our annual, annual inspections have almost doubled in one month? And as well as the plan review, we've really been doing a lot of hard work in our prevention bureau to get those plans done and those annual inspections done. Um, obviously, we don't have any school programs going on. The one other benefit that's been really good is that we've probably done at least twenty-plus, uh, happy birthday drive-bys in the community. Uh, the citizens of Temecula are very proud and like that. Uh, we've done that. You notice our school programs have been down on that, uh, slide there. So with the baby, or excuse me, the birthday party drive-by has been going over very, very well. Uh, next city council meeting, or the next time we have a presentation, we'll have some, uh, pictures of that up for you guys. Uh, but besides that, end of report.
All right, thank you. Uh, please, are you, uh, still awake? Mr. Novak, are you, are you there? I think we lost him. All right, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I had a few slides, but I don't think anyone's still watching this meeting. So I'm not even gonna attempt to share those, and I'll save those for my, uh, city manager, uh, broadcast tomorrow.
All right, so city attorney?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had a closed session, uh, no action to report, but I will say for the record that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Nigar and Councilmember Mayor Protim Edwards were not present for the closed session.
All right, well, with that being said, we will adjourn until May twelfth.